Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Commission Evening Meeting this February 15th, 2022. We appreciate you all being here. For those of you who are here for the first time, we welcome you and thank you for being here. There's a little format that we follow, and it starts with our Pledge of Allegiance, and we go into some housekeeping things, and then we have some presentations. Tonight, we'll be recognizing individuals and organizations, and that'll come a little bit later, and then we'll go into our meeting. So if I could all ask you, I guess, actually, I think I'm gonna have some help tonight. Let's see, we have the BSA Nautical Troop Number 33 from Fort Lauderdale, who is gonna join me tonight. Where are you, folks? Here you are. Gonna join me tonight in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. You wanna all come up here in the front? And if I can ask everyone else to please stand and join us in the pledge. And these young ladies... We're here when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
And there'll be a presentation with these ladies in just a few moments. Our Vice Mayor will be reciting a proclamation and presenting it to them. We have, if you could please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie. He's not present at the moment. Commissioner Sorensen.
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
Here. We have some walk-ons. Motion to approve consent of assignment of contract from all onstage productions. And Mr. Boalod, do you have a few others?
Correct. Pursuant to the conversation we had during the conference meeting and legislative update, there's six resolutions, walk-ons for your consideration, and I'll just quickly read the short titles. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, opposing Senate Bill 1300 and House Bill 1467 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session; a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, opposing Senate Bill 148 and House Bill 7 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session; a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, opposing Senate Bills 1834 and 1820 and House Bills 1557 and 747 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session; resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, opposing Senate Bill 974 and House Bill 985 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session; resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, opposing Senate Bill 620 and House Bill 569 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session; and finally, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, opposing Senate Bill 510 and House Bill 301 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple revisions to tonight's agenda. CR 6, there's additional language in the Resource Impact section of the CAM. And M2, the CAM was revised to correct the day an organizer has requested to play amplified music. So with regard to tonight's agenda and the minutes from the previous meeting, do I hear a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
If you moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie. Not present. Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the agenda and those minutes are now approved. So let's begin with our first presentation. Vice Mayor will recognize members of Nautical Troop 33. I wonder if you could all kind of come up and stand near the podium.
Thank you, David. All right, come on up, Troop 33.
Front and center.
Front and center. You guys can stand behind me, and I'll give a little introduction. So tonight, I'm really excited about presenting this, it's not necessarily a proclamation, a presentation that you each receive just for the hard work, especially I want to start with the good childs who are spearheading this campaign, along with Georgia Goodchild, who really took the initiative, basically by herself, she said, "Dad, I want to start this troop." This is the first in our world, right, first in the world, female nautical troop. So we started the male nautical troop, right? Yeah, so that is a round of applause. Thank you. And forgive me, I just had the chance to meet with them upstairs for about 15 minutes, I was just trying to capture how great this is. So they started with their son a few years ago, the nautical troop for the Boy Scouts, when he was a Boy Scout, now he's in college. And so then their younger daughter, Georgia, wanted to start this for a female troop. So we're really excited. There are about nine of you all together, right? Four of you are here today. So when did you start? What year did you start this crew? 2018? So you started a couple years ago. They obviously do all things nautical around South Florida, including boating, which is their favorite, and we heard about a lot of scuba diving and snorkeling and just boating on our waterways, and they're getting ready to go camping for seven days straight, or is it 10 days, and it's seven days, possibly 10 days. And they're getting ready to go camping for seven days straight, or is it ten days, and it's seven days, possibly ten days, seven days without a shower. We discussed, sorry. Not that you wanna know that, but we did have to discuss that. That's what happens when you're a troop member, you do this. So I'm proud of you all and what you represent for females, and that was really fun talking to each of you. We have eighth grade all the way through high school here. And what you'll do, I know there'll be like Merchant Marine captains or, and maybe in the military, they're really, they're really strong, they're really troopers. So I'm really proud of everything you guys are doing on the water. We talked about conservation, they're happy about the sea turtle ordinance that we are, not really an ordinance, but the, what is it that we're getting? But the sea turtle conservation that we're doing. So environmental issues related to the waterways are important. So tonight, I just wanted to issue you all recognition from the City of Fort Lauderdale for coming here today and for being the first in our world nautical troop, Thirty-three, from Fort Lauderdale. So I'm gonna give this to Summer Jones. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate that. And Sophie. Thank you, Sophie. And Ivy. Way to go. And then Georgia. So thank you. And then Mr. and Mrs. Good Child for being here, too. We appreciate that. And thank you for what you do for our city. And then our young leaders. Yes, we're gonna take a picture. Do you wanna say anything real quick about this? Any of the girls or anyone wanna speak anything about maybe your experience? What's your favorite part of this? I know I heard some cool stories upstairs. So you wanna speak on behalf of the group real quick?
I've been in this troop for two years now, and from whatever experience, we've gone on so many high adventures, and I love what we do. I would like to thank you, both of my scout masters, and all the girls that are doing this with me.
Thank you. All right, congratulations again.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now I have the honor of presenting a proclamation regarding Make-A-Wish Foundation in the City of Fort Lauderdale. I'd like to call up Richard Kelly, Chief Operating Officer for the Make-A-Wish Southern Florida, Michael Marrero and Joseph Ferio, co-owners of Make-A-Wish Foundation Resources. They're the title sponsors. Jeff John, owner of Damn Good Hospitality, he's the event host. Matt Sakko of Ruben Turnbill, he's the event chair. And Mary Holt, Jackie Pearl, Kevin Fantis, and Bitchley Ludwig of the Make-A-Wish Southern Florida. If you could all please come up at the front, if you don't mind. Good evening, everybody. How are you all? So thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate it. And so from the office of the mayor, this proclamation and recognition of Make-A-Wish Southern Florida. Whereas Make-A-Wish Foundation of America began in nineteen eighty with the fulfillment of a wish of a seven-year-old boy battling leukemia to become a police officer. His delight inspired the creation of the Make-A-Wish Foundation, which grants life-changing wishes for children with critical illnesses. Currently, the Make-A-Wish Foundation of America is the largest wish-granting organization worldwide with fifty-nine chapters in the United States and nearly fifty countries across the five continents. With the help of thousands of volunteers, Make-A-Wish Southern Florida has granted over thirteen thousand wishes locally since its inception in nineteen eighty-three. Every eligible child who is referred will have a wish granted, positively impacting thousands of individuals each and every year. In the year two thousand and twenty-one, Make-A-Wish Southern Florida granted more than four hundred wishes to local children with critical illnesses and collaborated with other chapters on one hundred and fifty more. It's a lot of wishes. Make-A-Wish Southern Florida finances its endeavors through corporate sponsorships, special events, foundation grants, and private individual contributions. Finally, the goal of Make-A-Wish Southern Florida is to inform the greater Fort Lauderdale residents in ways they can help and enrich the human experience through the hope and joy that granting wishes brings to critically ill children and their families. Now, therefore, we as the City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim this Saturday, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Make-A-Wish Southern Florida Day. And the City of Fort Lauderdale in commend MAFV Resources, Great American Bash, for hosting a benefit for the Make-A-Wish Southern Florida on Saturday, this nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Signed by myself, Mayor Dean Trantallas, dated today, the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Who would like to say a few words? Who'd like to say a few words? Oh, it just happened to have only four pages, but.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kevin from the Make-A-Wish Foundation. I'm a development manager, so I work with our mission resources team to gather the funds to make these wishes happen. The greatest thing about our foundation is there's zero cost to the families to grant these wishes. And on behalf of the Make-A-Wish Foundation and all the children we serve, I want to extend my gratitude to the City of Fort Lauderdale and you, Mayor, for supporting our mission, which is together, we grant life-changing wishes to children with critical illnesses. It's because of our community that we're able to continue to move our mission forward, forever changing the lives of local children and their families. We hope to see you all at the Great American Bash, which will be this Saturday.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you mind taking a picture together over here? And thank you for your work.
Yes, thank you.
Did I spell Sorensen good? Spelled Sorensen okay? Thank you, folks, and thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of our community and those young folks who really appreciate the wishes that you fulfill. You've been a great organization for so many years. Now I'd like to call our fabulous Police Chief, Larry Scirato, who will recognize our Officers of the Month for October two thousand and twenty-one and November two thousand and twenty-one.
Do we need to push this again? Let's move this to the next meeting, Mayor.
If we just wait a few more months, it'll be the one-year anniversary of October.
We could celebrate that, too. That would be good.
Maybe we wanna just push it out a little bit longer and.
Are they here?
Celebrate the first year anniversary.
It's hard to recognize people that aren't here. So we'll push this to the next meeting, and if we get to the anniversary of it.
Recognize them in abstention.
We will, we will celebrate that, too.
Well, I know that they're out there on the beach protecting us, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Step away from the podium, sir. Sir, step away from the podium. Step away from the podium.
Step away from the podium. Step away from the podium.
Where'd you come from? All right. So now's the time that I, we go on to what's called the Consent Agenda. And what we do is, there are a lot of items on this consent agenda. And we usually vote on them all at once. But if there's an item in particular that a member of this commission would like to pull, we will vote on that item separately, and we will discuss that item separately. If there's someone who's signed up for one of those items, then they would be asked to speak at that time. If after hearing the particular consent agenda item has, if it's been polled, so I ask for your patience to wait to speak at that time. If it has not been polled, and you've signed up to speak, I will ask if you would speak at the beginning, and then we will vote on it at that time. So right now, I will ask the City Commission. Let me get my trusty pad out here. Vice Mayor, is there, are there any items which you'd like polled?
No, thank you.
Just a minute. Someone stole my, oh, here it is. Okay. Commissioner McKenzie?
None, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
None, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Sorensen?
None.
Okay. So Desiree Gill-Smith, you wanted to speak on CM two?
No, only if there's questions.
Only for questions, okay? And same with April Kirk for CR one, just for questions, right? Okay. And Kim Praitano, CR two, did you wanna speak on that or just answer questions? I didn't hear you. Just to answer questions, okay? Excuse me. Lauren Bernstein, CR three, for questions only. Nancy Long, CR five. Nancy, are you here? Okay, okay. Donna Guthrie, CR six, just, is there, did you wanna speak on it or just answer questions? You do. Why don't you come up now and we'll recognize you on CR six. This is a resolution approving an agreement with Florida Power and Light Company in the Melrose Park neighborhood for an allocation of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to this item. The residents of Melrose Park.
Please speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
The residents of Melrose Park has asked me to come in and speak to this item. So I'm the president of the Melrose Park Homeowners Association, been the president for like fifteen years now. And Melrose Park is a unique community. We have, our uniqueness is, we're a community that's built in a circle. We have large lots, lots of fruit trees, and we have no lights. Lights has been an issue, it's come up quite a few times in the community since, I think, nineteen ninety-eight or so. And most, every time, it's been, the residents said no to lights. However, our present Commissioner kind of pushed the item. So what we're saying, whether we get lights or not, is the way it was done. So Commissioner McKenzie is our current Commissioner, has never attended a homeowners association meeting, never attended a meeting within the community. He sent out some surveys that we didn't know what the results, they came to the meeting, they said they're gonna do surveys. He never came, sent someone from the city, and said they're sending out surveys. Okay. They came back and said, oh, people voted for lights. No one said we sent out ten surveys. Five was returned, three said lights, two said no lights. Nobody gave us any kind of validation of the survey. And then last July, he sent out another communication from the city saying, come to a meeting for lights. He sent that out and had the meeting in Riverland, that park. We have a community center for the residents of Melrose Park that we own. He never reached out to us to say, can we have a meeting in the center? A lot of people came, was very contentious, as usual. And so now we have this resolution saying, you know, that he's asking for six hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Is this, question for you, is this a monthly amount, a yearly amount, a one-time amount? What's this amount?
Chris, would you like to respond to that?
This is an amount, there is an ongoing dollar figure that's listed in the CAM for future years, but this would be a, this is the one-time expense to do that project.
So the city could spend this money in other ways, because Melrose Park residents really do not want lights. Mr. McKenzie has been there, he doesn't visit, I don't even think he lives in the city for a lot, but that's something for some, another argument. So here's the thing, if the city, we have roughly two thousand homes in Melrose Park. If the city did a rebate, give each homeowner a fifty-dollar rebate, we could do solar motion-detected lights on our properties, and we'd be in charge of if we wanted lights or not. Lights in our community, like was said before, it's gonna increase our crime rates. Right now, the chief is here, we have the police officers at each meeting. Melrose Park has zero crime, no crime. The crimes that the police officers report to us happens on Broward Boulevard. The crimes that happen in Melrose is familial, like a husband, wife. We really have no crimes. So that's because when you come into Melrose at night, even if you live there, unless you know exactly where you're going, you're lost. And that holds the same for criminals. They will not come into the park. They won't, because they don't know where they're going. I don't see the benefit to the residents of Melrose Park for lights. I'm encouraging this commission to vote no on this item. Number one, it wasn't done with the consent of the community, with everyone. If you're gonna push something like this on the community, that's gonna cost the city ongoing dollars. There's a better way to do this. Make sure that it's fair, make sure that everyone is agreement, or find another way to spend the money. You have to really see if this is gonna be monthly, yearly, whatever. If you allocate this rebate, we could manage our own lights. If you go into Publix and you go into their freezer section, their lights come on and off with the motion. Everybody's looking at light pollution. There's light pollution. If you put lights in Melrose, we are a real community with a lot of folks with trees. We get birds. When we were shut down, you could, it was a chorus of birds out there. You put lights in, that's not gonna happen. We have to take, Commissioners, no one here lives in our community. You're gonna vote on an item that you have nothing to do with. You don't live there, you don't come there, and after your tenure is done, you're gone. We're gonna be stuck there. We are gonna be stuck with something we don't want. So I spoke to a lot of residents, we've had letters from our community that said, we don't want this. And I'm gonna encourage you, please do not vote for this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any response to that?
There's no need to respond. I think this process has been going on for a very long time. It's been vetted. And the residents of Melrose want it. And unless one of you wanna say something to contest where we are right now, this is in addition to. This is no cost to the homeowners either. So they've had every opportunity to participate. They did come to the, one of the agendas meetings and wanted to make it political during the congressional race, but I don't do politics at my agenda meetings. We just take care of the business of the people, and I'm ready to move this item.
No one, to best of my knowledge, no one came to your meeting to make this political, because this is not a political item for the residents of Melrose Park. This is a community item that we are saying, we own our properties, it's our community, and this commission, if they're gonna push this on us, should do this in a fair way. We did not have buy-in on this. You had one meeting that you scheduled, you did not attend your own meeting that you scheduled. You weren't there, so you knew nothing of what happened. If I'm a commissioner and I call for the citizen to come to a meeting, I'm gonna make sure I'm present, and you weren't present. There's nothing political about this. I got a lot of phone calls on this to say, Ms. Guthrie, you need to go up there and tell Commissioner McKenzie, no to lights. No, we don't want it. Thank you.
Donna.
Okay.
Thanks. Question, and maybe you said this, Donna, I might have missed it. Did you all vote on this?
No, no, because he did not give us an opportunity to do. So previously, what we did, when we were under the county, and even when we were in the city, what we did, we followed the way that the vote goes. So we would, the property owners in Melrose Park, we do a petition, and we vote fifty percent plus one, we get lights. Other than that, no. So we make sure everybody, you know, we, and usually when we have this, everybody shows up. We have an in-person vote. That's how it's done. Everybody shows up and we vote. That did not happen, which is why I, people today were saying, why are you even wasting your time? Robert McKenzie already has done this, it's a done deal. I'm saying, no, it's not a done deal until we speak, because we're the property owners. And even if you say it's not gonna cost the homeowners, where does the city get the money from to pay this? It's from us. So it's still gonna cost, not just us, it's gonna cost the city. It's gonna cost everybody this money. So you're putting a cost on the city that we don't want. We really don't want it.
Okay.
So if you're gonna do it, you're gonna have to do it the right way. You're gonna have to make sure we want it.
Do you wanna defer this item? I mean.
I think we need to defer it, only because of the disconnect, but what was the impetus for this to actually start? Can, Chris, can you tell us?
Hold on a second. If you look at this, you've had this before you before, you voted for the lights. We are about six. We are about six months from actually putting the lights in. This is in addition to. This process started way before this commission. We, based on what Mrs. Guthrie was talking about, the lack of communication is how we ended up sending out surveys. The last city manager, we sent out surveys, over 1,300 surveys, and the majority of the surveys came back saying they wanted streetlights because they couldn't get it done at their HOA meeting because typically it's anywhere from two to eight people there. And that's, that's a large crowd, eight. Now, it is not our obligation to go to HOA meetings. They're independent of us. Every time, I do send representatives out there, how they're treated by this HOA, I do not want to put anyone in that situation. But anything that I do at the HOA meeting level will never be vetted fairly for the thousands of residents that are in that area. So we took a different approach. Mail surveys out, survey said they wanted lights. We have lights about to go into the ground. I think the next six to 12 months, we've already got design. They even, six months ago, were able to pick out the lights they wanted because we assembled three samples in the neighborhood for all of them participate. Whether or not you choose to participate in something, isn't how we shape the outcomes. This is in addition to. We have, how much is this project, Chris? In total?
Just shy of $700,000.
$700,000. And this money is coming from where?
I would have an assortment of funding. I'd have to go to the CAM and pull the actual accounts that it's coming from, but it would, it's a capital project.
But Commissioner, you said we've already approved it?
We approved this.
So, can I ask a question? So how could you approve an item? You're the Commissioner. If you're going to approve this, you sent, you sent no communication out to the residents?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Mayor, this is not how we normally conduct business here. She was speaking on items, she pulled it. Now, to go back and rehash it and debate it is not the issue here tonight.
Well, I, I agree that-
The issue here tonight, and you can get staff to come up and talk about where we are with design and how we've already invested here. This is not the place to turn this back now and send it back to the community. And I would not be attacked publicly to reverse something that we have spent countless hours in city resources and how we got here, a majority consensus back in a survey to come, tonight to come here and try to be attacked verbally about what happened and didn't happen.
So the survey, okay, so city staff came and-
At first, it wasn't a survey, Commissioner McKenzie didn't do that.
Wait, let me finish.
You normally take a vote.
No, let me finish. So we were told that they were going to send out a mail survey. We were going to tell, we were also told that when the survey was completed, they would come back to the meeting and give us proof of the return. No one came back to the community to tell us what the survey said. However, DeAngelis, who is no longer with us, came to our meeting and said, well, we know you don't want lights, but you're getting them. The survey said no, but you're still getting them. That's what DeAngelis said. We never, staff never came back to us with proof saying, here are the letters that we mailed out, here are the yes, here are the no's. Nobody, nobody did that. That was dropped from then. So if I'm, if, if you're going to, and he's saying that people come to our meeting and they treat it badly-
I'm not going back.
That's, that's not-
She said, she said-
No one is, no one is treated badly when they attend the Melrose Park HOA meeting.
So what is it you want to, what is it you want to gain tonight? Let me, let me help you out, since you're asking for my help tonight. What is you want to gain tonight?
So what the community wants, so the prototype that was sent over to us and the prototype that they put in the community-
So we did, we did, we did give you an opportunity to pick from lights, right?
Well, we didn't, we really didn't pick because the prototype that you sent were solar. So even if-
It was three lights.
Yeah, but there's solar, there's solar power. So we thought, we were even discussing the lighting, that they were going to be solar powered lights. That's what the people thought. We didn't find out till now that they're not solar powered lights. So everything that was communicated to us, wasn't communicated to us in a manner that we would understand, the citizens would understand the process or, you know, I invited Mr. McKenzie to our meeting twice, he never showed up. So I can't do anything else. We're just an HOA and our HOA is there to speak for the community. He sent us eight to 10 people. Well, we're a community, if it rains, I'm not going to laugh, if we have a meeting on a rainy night, a lot of people don't show up.
First of all, stop right there. I never say you were coming to eight to 10. I said you have anywhere-
Eight to 10 people.
Two to eight people at your meetings.
Which is not true because you have, you have not attended any of our meetings.
And I choose not to attend them because of this type of behavior.
Well, you're, you're the elected official. If I'm an elected official, I go everywhere. I go everywhere.
Publicly try to attack me.
I'm not attacking you. I'm not attacking you.
Mayor, I would suggest that we take control of this meeting and deal with the agenda item before us.
You're such a bully, stop it.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Say it again?
I suggest we, you get two minutes when you speak to item, right? She's been going on for 10 minutes now.
Well, do you have a recommendation?
It was on the agenda to be approved tonight, on consent. Typically with consent, it's really a no-brainer at that point. Now, out of the blue, out of the blue, we have this attack on this, on this item. I have vetted this item. I think if we call staff or even have the city manager speak to this, how much time he's put into it? How much time the previous city manager put into the process?
With the community though, with the people that's going to affect-
And I was talking again.
So if there's-
And even the police department in our community meetings-
You weren't there.
Did I hear something? Said that it's very difficult to police this neighborhood with no lights. There are crime stats in that neighborhood.
There are not.
Chief, do we have any crime stats? Give me the last three months of crime stats in Melrose Park in particular.
Please do.
Okay.
Well, why don't we just defer this to our next meeting?
I have no intention of, you guys can vote it up or vote it-
But Mayor, can we just get some information? Because Commissioner McKenzie said that we've already approved this. Help me understand-
This was on last, at the last meeting on the budget amendment and that was, and funding was appropriated to it. With the funding appropriated to it, we brought it forward to this meeting. So you all did take some action by approving money to the project.
And how much did we approve?
626,839.
Also, we approved the exact amount that's in front of us, okay.
Correct.
Right, so, so Ms. Guthrie, I guess, I wish someone might have come and educated us a little bit about the fact. I mean, typically if I see something on consent that says we're going to be providing lighting and we're going to spend $627,000 for a neighborhood, I'm thinking the neighborhood wants it.
Don't.
I understand, but what I'm saying is we've, you heard from the city manager unfortunately that we had a budget amendment, we had an agenda item. Was that the last meeting, February 1?
That's correct.
February 1?
It was a budget amendment, so it was sort of buried, it wasn't a separate item.
I understand, but the money was allocated, but, right. I wish someone might have come then because then maybe we could have gotten a little bit more information.
We weren't, we weren't told about this. This is a cancer, I don't forget emails from him.
Can I ask one question, Ms. Guthrie?
Can I just ask a few more? I'm sorry, I wasn't finished. I apologize. But can we see these surveys? Can we see the tallies? Can we see what prompted the city to say we're spending $627,000 on lights? I just want to make sure the neighborhood wants it, that's all.
Where are we in design right now? On this project?
I'm going to have to turn it to our-
How many, how many outreach meetings have we had in the neighborhood with this?
This has been a topic that has gone on for some time.
For some time. Give me an idea, sometime, what, two months, three months, four months?
At least.
No. When did we start this process?
We've, we've been talking about lights in the neighborhood for, and the desire to put them in for a long time.
That's the city's desire, not the community's desire.
And when did the survey come back?
I'm going to have to defer to somebody who may know the answer to that. I do not.
Alan, probably was when you were here the first time, am I correct?
Where's Hal Barnes when we need him?
Hal's had nothing to do with this.
Hal Barnes know that we didn't want lights. He knew that. We had meetings with him with the grants that we got, that the grants are 15 years old and we still haven't had any movement on that. But this was rocketed through in the agenda meeting. It's, it's, you know-
So you guys rocketed this through the agenda?
No.
Is that how we got here, Mayor? It was rocketed through?
We got, we got emails and everything else, we got nothing-
Mayor, I'm speaking with, to you. Did we rocket this through here?
I don't know what that means, but-
Well, you knew, you knew everything that she said and what it meant.
But all I know is that we need to wrap this up.
You've never had any discussion about lights in Melrose, yes or no?
Mayor, I think we've got to pull this, Mayor. I think we should, I'll move to pull this out of the consent agenda, to vote separately on it. And I move the rest of the consent items and then let's vote on this separately.
Okay.
Do you want to ask one question, Mayor?
It's already been pulled, so it's going to be voted on separately.
All right, great. Then I'll move, go ahead, ask your question, but let's move this.
We're done, we're going to vote on it separately.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, let me just ask my question, I'm sorry. This is an issue in my district that neighbors come to me and they really do ask for lights on different streets and in their neighborhood. I mean, I'm working with this and I kind of begged the city for funding and I've yet actually to get it in a couple of my areas. So to me, it seems like this would be beneficial to your neighborhood. So I'm having a hard time understanding why maybe you wouldn't want it because I've never heard this from my neighbors, but I-
There are very, there are a lot of neighborhoods throughout Broward County that has no lights. Parkland has no lights over in-
There are some neighborhoods that just like that.
And, and, and-
Explosion of lights.
Yes, and the uniqueness because we're a circle, we, we, yeah, so most of the residents- So if you did a survey, because we've done this, you would get like 65% of the people saying no to lights and the rest saying yes to lights.
How many homes?
That's how it's broken down.
How many homes in Melrose Park? How many homes?
We have 1,900 plus homes in Melrose Park.
1,900, okay.
And so this money, if you took this money and gave a $50 rebate to every home and they put in solar motion generated light-
That would probably not doing that.
That'd be fixed.
I think those neighborhoods want storm drains more than-
Yeah, thank you very much. We want storm drains.
Hold on, let me help you guys out. Mayor, I know it's funny to you, but Melrose has storm drains. Melrose Manor's never had storm drains put in there.
I know.
So let's be careful how we deal with the two issues because what they didn't have was proper maintenance on their storm drains over there or in the, what we call the water retention swales, which are the canals that we filled in 20 something years ago when they were part of Broward County before we annexed them. So they have storm drains. They have storm drains. And now their storm drains are being maintained because of my efforts. I'm not going to sit here and debate this and make this a political issue. We follow the processes, you are part of them. Now, if you choose to be, at this point, selective with your hearing or understanding, then that's okay. That's fine with me. But it's the residents of this neighborhood have asked for this lighting system. We put a lot of time and effort into the design.
All right, I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, all right.
With exclusion of this.
We've concluded our discussion on this. Thank you, Donna. And there's a motion on the floor. Okay, one other thing, Morgan Surlett, CR7, you just came here for questions, right? Okay, very good.
And the item wasn't pulled, it was, it was, she asked to speak on it. So we can't pull it now unless I pull it or one of you pull it.
Well, Commissioner Sorenson pulled it.
No, he didn't. He said he was willing to pull it, but he thought she had pulled it.
I'll move to pull it.
Why would you pull it?
Because I think we need to vote separately on it. So I moved to pull and approve the remaining consent agenda.
Okay, I just wonder, I just wonder why you pull it, that's all.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor to approve all the consent agenda items except CR6. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner McKenzie?
This is to, this is to vote on all the consent agenda items except CR6.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes. So all those consent agenda items have now been approved. Anyone who's here on those items, you're welcome to continue to-
Bless you.
You're welcome to continue to stay here at the meeting or you may leave now, if you wish. Okay, CR6. Someone introduce a resolution.
I introduce it.
You introduce a resolution, okay. So it's a resolution approving the agreement.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Florida Power and Light Company for the installation of new light emitting diode street lighting in the Melrose Park neighborhood and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I thought when it was pulled, we'd have a chance to have some more discussion.
Have discussion.
Because I, I really would, you know, this is a tough situation for me. I mean, obviously, the district commissioner wants the lighting. The president of the neighborhood says we don't want the lighting. I have no backup, I can't see a survey, I can't see survey results. Typically, typically, you know, and I'm thinking now of neighborhood surveys when we go through the undergrounding process and we see, we see the ballots, we see the totals, we know the numbers, we have all of that information at our fingertips and we have all the facts.
I agree with you.
We don't have any facts here.
I agree.
So I need to see some facts. I, I just-
That's why I suggested we defer it, but-
I understand that, but here's what I'm saying. Just because someone came and asked a question, we don't have to revamp. This was, we, I've had this at my priority meetings, when we sat over at the Women's Club. This is not the first time we've heard of this.
I know, but she's not just anybody, she's the head of-
You sat here and said you don't recall having a conversation about this. That's what you said. I cannot believe you said that.
I'm hoping maybe I can clear some stuff up here. So Jania Robinson's coming to the podium. She was at the meeting in Melrose when, when the crowd was there and this, this item was discussed. And so she can provide a firsthand account of what happened.
And what I would like to know, Alan, your department, what's the total dollar amount for this project? Because the information that we're talking about now, nothing's adding up to what and how we got here. It was a lot more than $600,000. It was a lot more than the survey. It was a lot more community outreach. It was a process that we followed to get here tonight. Only thing we got here tonight was an attack on what they didn't want in the 11th hour. So if you will, please, because I was looking, searching for Hal, he's not here, but please take us from the beginning, where we are with these, the streetlights in Melrose.
Mayor and Commissioner Jania Robinson, City of Fort Lauderdale, City Manager's Office, Neighborhood Support. I attended two meetings in the community outreach and over the summer and both of those meetings with city staff, public work staff, where in, at the meeting that I attended, there was a large majority who was in, who approved the lighting. And Fort Lauderdale Police Department gave a presentation about the benefits of the lighting and there was the majority approved of the lighting.
How many people?
Where, where was the meeting?
Was at Riverland, I believe at Riverland. It was at a larger location than the location in the park because they, they expected a large crowd.
How many people attended?
I don't have that exact number, but it was a large-
Were there written surveys on all of this?
Say it again?
Were there written surveys on all of this?
Surveys didn't place at that meeting, this meeting-
Surveys had already taken place at this meeting. It was just sharing the lighting and they shared what the lights were going to look like, public work staff.
And when did the surveys go out?
I don't know exactly.
Did that go out to all 1,900 homeowners in Melrose Park?
I believe so.
And do we know the results?
I don't know at this time. I can find out.
I, I need to have some facts, Chris. I'm sorry, I just, I don't know is just not good enough for me.
All right, thank you.
Alan Dawes, come up to the, to the microphone. Do you remember this project or was it not here before you left?
I, I don't remember any of the history.
I don't remember any of the history.
Do you have any factual information on this project in terms of the dollar amount?
So, the project installs approximately 720 lights. They're basically 30-foot-high concrete poles with an eight-foot mast that comes out. The cost for the installation of the poles and the electrical is 600 and...
$29,000.
$29,000. And then, there's administrative costs for us to administer the program.
These are concrete poles?
They're 30-foot concrete poles with an aluminum mast arm coming off of it with an LED light on it. That's about 5,000 lumens each.
Those are not attractive neighborhood lights. Concrete poles, seriously?
Now, Mayor, what we won't have is someone talking from the back of the room. You've got to at least run the meeting properly.
You know, I would ask, who made the motion? Commissioner Sorenson?
No, the Commissioner McKenzie.
Oh, okay.
I introduce it.
Personally, I need some facts. I'd like to see diagrams of the lights selected. I'd like to see the results of the survey. I'd like to see some sort of affidavit of where the survey went out. In other words, I'd like to see what we would typically see.
If I had known...
We do an undergrounding project in Fort Lauderdale and we go through a very thorough process of making sure we reach every single neighbor by mail. We see the results of the surveys. We announce the vote total. We do all of that. We do all of that. So, I need to see that same level of scrutiny and fact.
But Steve, to all due respect, we went through that tonight when it was questioned in such a manner. I don't think staff was prepared for that. We followed all of the protocols. And I think the city attorney wants to speak to this issue. So, it's not a me trying to hijack. I got hijacked tonight about what we thought was a consent item to move forward. We went through all of these processes.
Can we just, it's just two weeks.
But hold on. I know it's two weeks. I get that. And I'm willing to do that. But what I want us to understand is here we are in 11th hour, questioning the work of a district commissioner, which we typically don't get this far in the weeds, where we want to go back and make you do outreach. Because I know you've done a thorough job. I know that all of us do that when we go out now, especially this commission in terms of trying to get the neighbors' participation. You can't get 100%. I don't care where you go. However, we followed all of the protocols when we're here today. But I do want Alan to speak this issue because there were some legal issues we had to overcome too to get here today. We just didn't get here because I came in a room and just turned on some lights. Alan, if you, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to note that unlike the surveys for the undergrounding in La Solis Isles, those were required by ordinance and by a legal process, these surveys were not required at all. They were purely voluntary. So, I just want to make that clear. The surveys were not required. No, I understand. Thank you. The other point is that you're in the middle of a vote. So, if you're gonna procedurally...
Yeah, we're in the middle of a vote, so...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no. I think it was up to me and I had comments and questions.
All right.
My preference is to see this get deferred for two weeks. That's all. And gather the facts.
But, okay, so I'm gonna vote no too. So, the resolution does not pass. Okay.
So, we're bringing it back. But listen, hold on a second though. When we bring it back, I want us to go back, City Manager, because obviously you were not prepared tonight.
Yeah, I'll be more prepared with more backup data.
Yeah, we should be more prepared.
No, but no, don't say, Dean, I think you're part of this process tonight because you're very good friends with Ms. Guthrie. You've even been on campaign material when she's campaigned against me with her. So, it's not funny. This is a serious matter...
You campaigned against me?
No, I didn't. No, I didn't. I never campaigned against you.
Oh, please.
I had a pick. I had Mackenzie's picks.
What a day we're having. What a day.
Whatever's good for the geese is good for the ganna, but you're not listening. But see, you don't want to control the meeting. See, this became political tonight and the residents of Fort Lauderdale are gonna suffer.
Uh, political. When a neighborhood association comes here and needs to do something, I have to listen to that person.
Yeah, but listen, 26 Part 1 crimes last month in Melrose and they said there were no crimes in Melrose. I just got this from the police chief. So, if we're gonna come up here, you want facts from your own staff that got this to you? What about having facts from the people that stood at the microphone and had no facts other than oral presentation here tonight?
What are those 26 Part 1 crimes?
The police chief can speak to them. They come out.
Chief, if you can come up. And ladies from the chapter, did you have any idea this was gonna be so much fun tonight when you came? You thought you were gonna get a little plaque, that's it, say goodnight, go home. No, not at all. Your government network. Your government network.
So, the evaluation period from Melrose Parks was the last six months. There were 26...
Six months, I'm sorry.
Six months. There were 26 Part 1 crimes from burglary to robbery to larceny to home burglary to theft.
So, so were they, I wish the person in the audience would not speak out. That's typically not how we do things with this mission. Mayor?
Yeah, I understand.
You understand, but you're gonna allow it.
Please don't talk anymore. We've, let me just say this. The item has already been voted on.
Hold on, but I get to speak.
We need to move on.
No, but I'm coming back to this.
But if you would like to ask...
I'm asking the police office some questions. I want to clarify, I want to clarify some things. I agree we could defer, but it was said at the podium tonight that there were no crimes in Melrose and the crimes that were reported were on Broward Boulevard. 26 Part 1 crimes over the last six months and what were they again?
They were between various offenses from theft to burglary to robbery to carjacking. So, there were 26 various offenses. Broward Boulevard I excluded in the search. So, it was within the core of the circular streets of Melrose Park. If I added Broward Boulevard, it would probably would triple it.
And how does that stack up? Six, I'm 26, 26 Part 1 crimes in six months?
Over six months.
How does that stack up in comparison to the other neighborhood associations in the city?
It's adjoining neighborhood is, is far outpaces it as it relates to criminal activity. So, it, I mean, it's 26 crimes. To say there were none is factually inaccurate. There were 26 Part 1 crimes that we consider of serious nature in that neighborhood in six months.
Is that high, low, medium, along the spectrum in the whole city?
It's in that six-month period, depending on where you're at. Like I said, the adjoining neighborhood outpaces it as a relative to crime. So, it would, I would put it on the medium to lower side of crime events.
Okay, thanks.
And Janie, when we come back, can we, because I know it was a heated meeting at Riverland Park and very few people. And I think Mr. Murray and Mrs. Guthrie were one of the minority that objected in that meeting. So, I want to know, I want the sign-in sheets. I want the, everything that took place at that particular meeting. Chris, I want all the information of how we got here, the surveys that we, that we did do. I think they came through your department, Janie, so we can go back and grab those. I want all the information so that this commission can, can make a decision with all the information that we had and forgot along the way. I want the statistics on crimes in that area. I want the police piece that where the officers recommended that they get lighting so they could help police the area better. I just want all the information so we can vote this up or down, but I want it based on the information of how we got here. I spent countless hours with Florida Power and Light. I've spent countless hours with the design team with the lights and I didn't pick a light. I sent all the recommended lights back to the neighborhood to pick and even Ms. Guthrie participated in that process. Whether or not I was there or not, staff was there and they represent me each and every time that they go out, including police when they go out to these meetings. Staff is there and they had opportunities to vote the lights up and down. And I believe she picked one at that particular time. But I want the full presentation when we get back here the next time so that the people know exactly how we got here. And Ms. Guthrie, I appreciate you coming tonight to voice your opinion, but the next time you come, I would appreciate if you bring the facts of everything that you accused of me and/or this staff of doing or not doing tonight. Thank you.
All right, no, 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 you can't. It's okay.
But Mayor, can I also request, I also want to see how the residents voted on, I want to see why they chose and how they voted this vote.
Well, you know, if the, if the association wants to conduct their own survey, you know, between then...
No.
I mean about the poll. I don't...
She said they voted.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, I've rarely seen people vote for 30-foot concrete poles with a mast on it in a neighborhood.
They voted for lighting and then we gave them...
No, I understand that part, but I want to see why they chose...
Have you ever been to Melrose Park?
No, I haven't. Actually, I have. Of course, I've been there.
Night?
But night, no, I haven't. I just want to know why they would choose a 30-foot concrete pole.
It's probably hurricane resiliency type stuff.
But you can have hurricane resilience.
I have those in my neighborhood.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We need to move on. M1, motion approving an application for temporary beach license, outdoor event agreement, extended road closures for the Florida AIDS Walk and Music Festival. Anybody, anyone have any questions? If not, would someone move the item?
Moved.
Someone seconded? Moved and seconded?
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and M1 is approved. Good luck on the event. Who's here tonight on the event? Oh, there you are. Thank you, ladies. M2, motion approving event agreements, related road closures and request for music exemption for the 26th Annual La Solis Wine and Food Festival and St. Patty's Day Fest.
Get ready, Mayor. It's gonna be a good time. Moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. But I got a question that needs to be addressed here. What are we doing on the route? What's happening there, Chris? Do you have any resolution on that?
Yes, it'll be before you at your next meeting. The most recent map I saw, but I heard differently during agenda briefings, had a modified route. So, I would rather just answer that question now with it will be known in the next two weeks and that will come before you at the meeting on March 1st.
Okay, all right.
What's the planned route right now?
Well, I don't know what the planned route is. I can, the most recent map I've seen stages near the wharf and navigates towards Del Frisco's on La Solis Boulevard. But I heard, I heard yesterday there was some thought...
It's going reverse?
That it might come up 2th Street, so...
I don't know.
I've heard other than that. So, that's why we need a report.
That's why I don't have a...
The reason why I ask, if we're trying to amend something, we obviously know where, what it was that, and what it is we're gonna amend.
Hold on, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about food and wine and now you all are talking about the parade.
Talking about the route.
They're different things.
It's not the same.
So, I just want to...
Yeah, but he said route.
But I'm just bringing this up.
But it's not the parade. It's a festival.
I'm talking about route.
You're talking about the parade?
Route.
Yes, which is part of the parade. Yeah. We're talking about a festival.
No, I'm talking about what he's talking about.
Keep talking to him, please. Straighten him out. Get him going, Commissioner McKenzie.
No, I'm only talking about what he's talking about.
Who's on first?
I know. Let's take care of the festival. Then we can talk about the parade.
Okay, please call the roll.
So, no, but seriously, what's the route that you know right now?
We'll get a report back from the city manager because there's no...
In two weeks?
There's no defined route.
In two, so what is proposed is all I'm asking.
I don't believe they've agreed on a route yet, the committee that's working on it.
Folks have, folks have called me about it.
No, I think the committee did make a recommendation. We'll let you find out, though.
I had enough, enough work to get this agenda together. I'll put that effort into this agenda.
Thank you.
Phil, do you, do you know what the route is for the parade? Not the Wine and Food Fest.
Well, while he's coming up, let's vote on this.
Yeah, that's fine.
What do we vote on? The Wine and Food Fest or the route?
I move to approve the Wine and Food.
Okay.
This is M2. Please.
Second.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes. Yes, Phil. Do you have any thoughts? Where are you marching, Phil?
As I understand it, the latest map from the committee was it would stage on Andrews from Broward down to Second. And it'd also stage on Second from Andrews west to the tracks. It'd actually start on Andrews, go down to La Solis, go east on La Solis to Fifth, go north on Fifth, a couple of blocks and then there.
Where's Fifth?
Fifth is Del Frisco's. I've been...
Thought that was, that's not the tunnel. Okay.
That's, that's where they feel this works and so forth because we, because La Solis, basically Tunnel Top at Cheesecake is gonna be closed down, so we can't pass through there from a parade standpoint.
But we would need, we would need some, some safety measures where we've been having the closures on Second for a while. I think that was part of the discussion, but...
It was. And we, and as the commissioner mentioned, so we had, we had the tunnel on the east and then we also had the tracks and the, the, the second street on the west. So, understanding that, we're, they're gonna try to stage east of the tracks, but we'll have police there if that's the route that stays. But that's what the committee at this point has decided they want to do.
Okay.
So, just for my own clarification, in the past, when we staged near the tunnel, were we on the side street where the construction is now or were we down by the, the little lobster bar there? We were back up that street, right?
Yeah, we went quite a ways. The challenge is with, with the tunnel now, they, and it's gonna get worse from the, from the road closures before the event going into March. So, I don't remember the MOT, but I think there's some full closures and then some, one side of the street goes north, south, or east-west. There's quite a bit of work that's gonna be done prior to the festival. So, we, we had to move it off of the old route this year.
So, what if they went to Second? Coming from the west now, I just flipped it. If you're coming from the west, going back east, you're gonna stage where on Second or because you're saying the railroad has construction there as well, right?
Are you asking what the, the route that they're proposing now?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna stage on Second and they're gonna stage on Andrews.
Okay, that'll work.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
So, I think that's the amendment.
Moving on to M3, motion approving an event agreement and music exemption with Shuck and Die for Mardi Gras. Any questions? Please, someone...
Moved.
Someone seconded, please?
Second.
So, moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and so that event agreement is now approved. R1, appointment of a board and committee members. Would you want to please call the names?
For the March 1st, 2022 resolution, consensus, Beach Business Improvement District Advisory Board, Michael Monroe, consensus, ultimate alternate member representing Bahia Mar, Kusich Bosler, which is a reinstatement consensus, primary member representing the Ritz Carlton. For the Citizens Committee of Recognition, Robert A. Dressler, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And individual nominations, Aviation Advisory Board, Louis Gavin, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And for tonight's resolution, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Leighton Lindo, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Ray Thrower, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Dennis Olmer, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Economic Development Advisory Board, Ryan Ryder, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee, Marilyn Mamano, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Michael Marshall, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And Gerald Angeli, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And that rounds it out.
Any other modifications to this? Any additions? Okay, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part here of. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. And I want to thank everybody who's agreed to volunteer for these board or committee assignments. Thank you for your commitment to our city. R2, sequoia judicial resolution approving plat known as the Gitta Ganpat plat located at 2731 North Federal Highway. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Vice Mayor, do you have any, I was gonna say any confessions. I meant to say any disclosures.
Yes. Well, Anthony, do I have to disclose everything related to the site plan even since this is a plat? Do I have to disclose, or maybe Alan I should be asking? Like, I've met with numerous times, I've met on this project, but that was discussing the site plan. It wasn't discussing the plat.
I would probably...
I mean, I can, if it's...
Yeah, if it's not too voluminous, I would just think...
It's not that much.
I would, because they're sort of...
All right, October 22nd, 2019, Courtney Crush, 1115, 2020. Neighbors, Coral Shores, Ben Wofford and others, 11620. Courtney Crush, 12920. Doug Mead, neighbor in Coral Shores, 13120. And Ben Wofford from Coral Shores, 2420, meeting with Courtney. And then, 61120, meeting with Courtney. And then, I think that was it. I had, Courtney and I communicated yesterday, but we did not meet. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Courtney Crush.
Commissioner Glassman?
You know, I'm looking at my records here. Courtney, did we meet on this? I didn't think... Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have any disclosures.
Can you come up here for a second? What exactly does your client want to do here? There's an existing motel there. Are they gonna tear it down? It wasn't clear in the backup. Are you, they gonna tear it down?
Absolutely, Mayor. Courtney Crush, on behalf of the property owner. Jerry McLaughlin is here also, who's processing the plat application. This property, which has a rather tired existing motel on it, that was a kind word.
Excuse me, it's historic.[1694.96]
Better tear it down quickly.
Has been, was approved almost a year ago for a Holiday and Express hotel, 110 rooms versus the 50 that are on the ground today. We had worked with the vice mayor both on some FDOT issues and neighbors' concerns about height of the garage and placing the tower as close to Federal Highway.
So it's going to be a Holiday and Express?
Yes.
Okay.
And so this is, even though the property was platted, the planning council decided that the legal description was not specifically delineated, even though it was half of Lot B. So that's why we're replanning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorenson, any disclosures?
None.
Okay, just out of caution, I'm going to disclose that I had a previous conversation with you and/or your client. Okay, any further questions regarding this?
One question, Courtney, real quick. Does this come to the commission automatically or is it subject to call-up? Or I'm just curious why we're not related to the plat, just the site plan?
The site plan was not subject to a call-up. It was approved last spring.
Already approved, okay.
Yes, it was approved. We will be, we've been discussing with Coral Shores, a parking reduction, which they, their president, Olivier Cale, is very receptive to because it would lower the height of the garage even more, to only two stories, and so that would go to the Planning and Zoning Board and be subject to a call-up in front of you as commissioners.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Mr. McLaughlin, you signed up to speak, but I assume it's for just questions, correct? Where are you, Mr. McLaughlin? There you are. Okay. So I have no further disclosures. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Move.
Move, do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll on the motion to close public hearing.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. R2, someone would like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's introduced.
That's to approve?
Yes.
To approve, right.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a plat entitled Gitta Ganpat and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution is approved, the plat's approved. Can I just ask a quick question? What is Gitta Ganpat? Is that a combination of people's first names, last names? Is this just- Okay, okay. All right, good words for Scrabble. R3, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an incidental take permit application along with a habitat conservation plan and environmental assessment to the United States Fish and Wildlife Service for formal review and approval. That's something we talked about this afternoon at the conference meeting. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any questions regarding this? Any further questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute and submit an incidental take permit application along with a habitat conservation plan and an environmental assessment to the United States Fish and Wildlife Service for formal review and approval, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R3 is now approved. PH1, a public hearing amending the ordinance of City of Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element incorporating Broward County Land Use Plan policies and adding a new property rights element. Someone, Anthony, can you come up here and kind of give us a summary of what the purpose of this item is?
Good evening, Anthony Farhado. So I have Lorraine Tapp in here. She's our principal planner that was assigned with this project, but in a nutshell, this was something that was required by the state when we sent our comprehensive plan up for consideration through our ear process, our evaluation appraisal and review, and we were told that we could move forward with the plan without having to make amendments and get it recertified as long as we inserted these elements that the state wanted. So if you have more detailed questions, Lorraine can definitely answer those.
So these are consistent with the Broward County Land Use Plan?
They are, yes. They've all been reviewed by Broward County and all the other reviewing bodies.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Farhado? Okay, there being none, do we have to close public hearing, Alan?
You should.
Okay. Anyone interested in speaking on this item? Because no one signed up for it. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll on closing public hearing.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. So PH1, we're introducing an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan. So would someone like to introduce the ordinance? It's been introduced.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element by incorporating Broward County's Land Use Plan policies and adding a new property rights element, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions transmittal to the applicable reviewing agencies and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and PH1 is now approved. Moving on to OFR1, this is a first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations concerning the Central Beach zoning districts. To revise the process and procedures for uses in the Central Beach zoning districts, revise and adopt dimensional requirements, including open space and streetscape design requirements, and adopt prescriptive criteria for the design and compatibility point system. That's a mouthful. We have a couple people who've signed up for this. We have Bill Brown. Followed by someone, come over here, come over here, come back, come back, come back, come back. I cannot read this. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Mr. Brown.
Vice Mayor, members of the commission. Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Alliance, unlike some other agenda items tonight, this has been vetted within the community of the Central Beach Alliance, going back for the last couple of years, been worked on. It's been presented, staff has been out with us both to our board meetings and the membership meetings, and it was not, there was no major issues from the residents and we're very much in support of it. However, and as you'll probably hear later from staff, within the last two weeks, and I just learned of it tonight when I came in, there was a couple changes, proposed changes. To say we're in support of those changes without having vetted it with the board and the membership, I can't do that. However, what I can do is we have a board meeting on Thursday of this week and a membership meeting next week. If the board feels that those are substantial changes that possibly we could not support, we would have time to come back for the second reading and voice our concerns. Some of the things, one of the things, though, it was obviously in the ordinance is zero setbacks, basically a residential or zoning and a different one, and I think in talking with, I've heard that Commissioner Glasman has some questions on zero setbacks. Personally, from a public safety standpoint, I think that is a major concern, even in the old ordinance, especially if you have a higher than a two to two and a half story building or residence where you have to put up ladders to make rescues, has to be taken in consideration. But as it stands right now, we can support it, and if there's any additional concerns, we can come back to second reading after you hear what staff has met with some of the developers and came up with. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. Rishi Kapoor, followed by Courtney Crush, followed by Dev Motwani. Dev, are you here? Oh, there you are. You just blow in the room?
Yes, he did.
What have you been doing the last six hours? Hello, Mr. Kapoor.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for your time this evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to comment on a couple of things in relation to the proposed code amendment. Just really, in looking at various sites that we're studying throughout the subject area, there have just been some architectural studies where we face some concerns about the floor plate sizes on larger sites being reduced and having these caps above the podium levels to where it could result in potentially not being able to utilize the square footage we otherwise could have in the development of certain sites. And I know that there could be the ability to go to second towers, for example, on properties that would be able to allow for such development, but pending the tower setback amendments that are being proposed here, we just have a fear that in some instances, the square footage you otherwise could have been able to develop would no longer be applicable under the new code.
Isn't that the point, though?
And, well, I think the idea is that the effect on property value when you're underwriting a business plan, you know, obviously you're talking about an in-demand area, you know, to be very fair, and property prices that are being put forth are predicated on what you underwrite a site in order to be able to produce. So, you know, the honest answer is if the intent of what you had just mentioned is to kind of downzone the area, I understood the intent more to be about creating open space and view corridors and more slender buildings and being able to create more sightlines and breathability in the community. I'm in favor of all of those things, if that's the intent that is being proposed. But when similar legislation was passed in the downtown corridor, you were able to accomplish such things because there is no height limitation. So here we have strict height limitations that if you do take away some of these kind of massaging of the buildings, it in effect downzones some of the larger properties and what you would be able to create, and that to me is the concern that I think in all fairness, as an entrepreneur who's building these and putting our money at risk, you know, you underwrite for a certain business plan and then that changes. So I think that the ask, very simply on our side, is there's a lot of really good components of the legislation that has been put forward. I can see the thought that's been presented and the kind of roadshow of collecting feedback, I tip my hat to because I appreciate it. My simple ask is if there is a condition where you see that square footage has been, in essence, taken or reduced, and that was not the consequence, that relief would be given either an adoption of the prior code or the ability to make up for the square footage with an extra ability of height. And that's the simple ask, to say that I support and understand many of the items that have been put forth in the proposal, but just fear the reduction as an unintended consequence, and just ask that the commission and staff keep that in mind as a safeguard in a subject, sorry, in an objective manner, instead of having to come back and subjectively asking for relief. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Commissioner Glasman, what is your take on this ordinance? Is that, my understanding was that the very intention was to sort of, you know, reduce the density here. Is that kind of your understanding?
Yes, although, and I still want to hear some of the testimony from folks, because I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of folks on this, but it's not always so black and white, because in some of these parcels, where they are a smaller parcel, you do need to, I think, have some of that density flexibility. I also want to make sure, and we'll get into this discussion later, about, I want to talk about the zero side and rear setback item. I also want to make sure that whatever we do going forward, that we do have the possibility for the flexibility of going to the city commission on any of these issues as well. But I agree with most of the reasons that have been already expressed and also in writing. We do want to be able to have more open space and space between buildings and tower separation, and I'm really not actually adverse to some height if it means that we're going to gain some of those things, and I think that was really well demonstrated with a project on the beach recently with the Celine Project, where the neighborhood actually said, you know, we're willing to give a little height for a more slender structure so that we see views and we see the sky and we see the water and we see light, and they were willing to understand and make that trade-off because at the end, they just benefited from that. And actually, the pedestrian experience is really, when you think about it, if you add a few more stories, the pedestrian experience is really not going to change that much from street level, but I do believe in certain instances, we do need to. Now, I did see that there was a compromise made and some of the floor plates were actually increased after there was more input, so I want to hear some of that, and I do have some questions for staff.
All right, so let's get through public hearing.
Okay.
Go to that. Courtney Crush, followed by Dev Motwani, followed by Mary Furtig.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Courtney Crush, representing several property owners in this, on the Central Beach. First of all, I would like to thank both the Central Beach Alliance, because they've observed over the last couple of years their participation and input to your city staff, and also city staff's willingness to sit down and address some concerns that were raised at the July 2021 Planning and Zoning Board meeting. The proposal, the proposed ordinance at that time, you know, put a lot of static requirements in, introduced floor plates where they didn't exist, introduced tower separation, which is a good thing, tower stepbacks, and my impression had not been modeled out on different parcels. The beach has varied properties, some larger, some, you know, 10,000 square foot lot, which is a quarter of a block that might be in the North Beach Village area, versus the Elbow Room block, you know, down in the PRD, you know, completely different intentions and experience. And so putting in definite setbacks versus the half the height of the building, which as you all know, then comes to you, and how do you all evaluate whether it's appropriate to go from a half the height, 100-foot setback, down to a perhaps requested 10 or 20? I think this commission has had expressed back in 2018, it preferred to have better standards.
Well, isn't that because realistically, even though we've always had a half the height requirement, we've never done it?
Never.
Never.
I think I've studied-
Exactly.
Never.
So why have it there?
And if it's going to be performance-based, it shouldn't just be, oh, it's going to develop a significant impact and it comes to you without what your thoughts would be on why you would do that.
Exactly.
So again, staff sat down with myself and Nektoria Chakas and looked at some of these requirements, and we tried to see how that building form actually worked. It sounds good to have 20-foot setbacks to the street. Mayor, I know you said back in 2018 you wanted, you know, generous setbacks so we could have the wide sidewalks, the shade trees, et cetera, as you all did, and then the building goes up and then steps back at 65 feet, which again seems like a reasonable maximum height for a podium. Commissioner Glasman, to your point, on some small properties, that could mean, I think, and I'm not an architect, that really the building disappears at 65 feet. If you have to step back an additional 12 or 15, depending on feet, on each side, you know, you would essentially not have a tower, and I don't know that that was the intention in thinking of the larger parcels. Something else that we spoke with staff about, but they did not have any direction to adjust, is density. Many of the new projects, Mr. Kapoor is included, Mr. Motwani is also, in the North Beach area of the beach are luxury units. That is partly because when you have a maximum density of 32 dwelling units an acre, you're proposing, you know, a very small, small number of units. And if you look at the existing buildings, there's a building at 524 Orton that has 23 dwelling units, it's seven stories, and it's about two and a half times the density that's currently in the code. So what we had discussed with staff, they are not, they did not include in the ordinance, is a consideration, perhaps on some of these smaller properties where you could put the density back where it was or increase density so that we could have, you know, modest-sized units. With respect to floor plates, I had noted, both in July and October when we returned to the Planning and Zoning Board, that staff had differentiated between the appropriate floor plate for a hotel and the appropriate floor plate for a residential building. I'm not a planner, but, you know, as we walk around the beach, not only do some of the hotels have residences in them and vice versa, but from a, you know, a citizen's experience, those buildings look very much alike. They are glass, they have glass balconies, they have a lobby, they may have a retail store. So from a planning standpoint, why would you differentiate between the two? The original proposed 10,000 square foot floor plate that was adjusted by a, to 12,500 in October, when it was re-presented at the Planning and Zoning Board, wasn't a concern. Again, there are many projects on the beach, the Paramount, the Hilton Hotel, that are about, that are upwards of 17,000 square feet. So again, we just asked the question, you know, what is the thinking behind that? Which, in discussing it with staff, it seems as if they are receptive and perhaps see the point that there's no need to differentiate and that 16,000 may be the appropriate maximum in those districts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to make one comment on some of the stuff that Courtney said, and what struck me is I think we do have to realize that with regards to density, we don't want to get trapped where the only thing we- we don't want to get trapped where the only thing we can build are really large units in a building. Because sometimes I think we have to have the flexibility where smaller units will be preferred, especially with regards to lot size. And not everybody is going to want a really large luxury unit. We, I think we have to have, to make sure we have that flexibility. So whatever that requirement is going forward, it doesn't shut out that possibility of having smaller units.
Okay.
And if I may make one brief comment with respect to flexibility, staff did include some flexibility as to certain of these parameters, not height, not density, but did include some. And perhaps, perhaps the commission would consider introducing flexibility for any of these new requirements. If you can show it's a superior design and provides more light and air and arguably consolid-, produces fewer towers, less mass, we would like the ability to present that to you.
Is it, well, isn't that always the prerogative of the commission? To, to, to be flexible?
I think with some of these static requirements, and I'll defer to staff, there is relief possible for floor plate, tower separation and step back, but not everything.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Dev Motwani, followed by Mary Fertig.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for the time. Dev Motwani, managing partner, Merrimack Ventures, longtime beach resident. You know the story. Dean will roll his eyes if I tell it again.
Don't go into it.
But I do want to thank, start by thanking your staff. They've been great. They put up with me. So thank you if you're here. They've been attentive. I know they're trying to manage a lot of interests. But as a property owner, our job is to manage our interests and protect our interests. So I think what the staff has come up with, ultimately in the end, with the recommendations in the memo to increase the residential floor plate size to 16,000 and to keep FAR out of the MBRA and the IOA, which is currently the case, I think that's the appropriate thing to do and the fair thing to do. I support Rishi and Courtney's comments regarding flexibility on height as well as on density, particularly in the residential units. And I'll give you an example. The Gale was a PUD. I, I hope it was an example of a successful project that people were happy with. There, because we were a PUD, we were able to go up to 50 units per acre. But that was obviously a long, lengthy process. Those units averaged about $600,000 square, $600,000 at the time. 530 Birch, I would love to produce a similar product. It's our next project. I can't because it's not a PUD and our average unit there would have to be over $2 million to support that project. So I would, I, I really believe the density should be increased on the residential units per acre. 50 units per acre is the same as what's allowed on the hotel side. And we did an analysis and provided to staff, 50 hotel rooms provides the same traffic as 50 residential. So I don't know why we would penalize a residential use and not allow for more flexibility and, and cheaper units. And so, or we should say more affordable units. I don't think anyone's, anything's cheap on the beach. But, so, so I would, I would, I would like to see that as a, as an update to, to staff's recommendations as this moves forward.
So you think that the density should be 90, just like it is, instead of 48?
You know, the MBRA is a, is a form-based code. So we're, we're really like limited on height. We're now adding floor plates. We're adding a lot of, we're basically creating a box and saying you can build within this. So I don't see a need for, or any number, but I can understand the concerns about leaving it uncapped. So I would say at a minimum 50 because you're already allowing 50 resident, sorry, hotel rooms.
Right.
But if it's up to 90 to match the neighboring district, I don't, I don't think you'd get that high. So I don't know there's need to go that high.
Mayor, you said 90. Did you mean 50?
Well, I'm looking at some of the other categories.
Some of these, right.
The MBRA is 50 and 32, 50 for hotel, 32 for residential. But I'm just wondering what, I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing that number out. Like, what do you recommend?
Yeah. So, you know, again, if you, you're limited already to 120 feet and if there is some height, you know, flexibility because of the floor plate restriction, maybe you go to 140 feet, you'll, you'll decide that. You're not going to get as high as, I don't think you'll get as high as 90. So somewhere between 50 and 90 feels probably appropriate.
That's their tiny units. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and then you get to parking as well. I mean, as you, the smaller units you have, you still have a big parking requirement and that drive, also drives up the cost. I know parking's not in this, but I hope you guys will, will consider maybe readjusting that for current environment so we're not penalizing people. You have to do two parking spaces per unit and that's just, that's, that is a cost burden as well. So thank you. I think I covered everything. I just want to again, thank staff for their time and consideration.
All right. Thank you. Mary.
I'm going to be very brief because I know our district commissioner has this, has this well in hand. So I'll just say that the last time this came before us was the same night that we heard Southeast Fourth Street with the zero-foot setbacks. And it just, it just hit home to me again that if you are going to put that in, you are going to, in six months, a year, two years, you're going to have a group out here that says, how can you have these zero-foot setbacks and allow buildings to be built? Bill brought up the emergency, the access for emergency services and, and there's just a whole host of reasons. So I hope when your final plan, that you will have enough of a setback to, to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Zero. Well, it says, it says minimum, MBRA, minimum side setback is 20 feet and the front is 20 feet, which really is more reflective of what we've been doing rather than one half the height. So to your point. Okay. Any further questions or comments? There's nobody else who's asked to speak on this? I don't have anybody signed up. Someone like to move to close public hearing?
Some moved.
I hear a second.
Second.
Commissioner McKenzie, Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas, Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce the ordinance on first reading?
Have a question, Mayor. So some of the other suggestions that we brought up this evening, will they be incorporated for the second reading or do we need to deal with it right now? Or Anthony, what do you think? Because you've heard some of the consensus, you've heard some of the, some of the comments. And I also wanted to echo everyone's thank yous to staff because this is, this has been about six years in the making, I think.
It's been a long time.
Right? So thank you for six years of work on this.
Everybody gives Anthony credit.
No, Bill, I, I remember we gathered, I think it was at the Hilton.
I think it was the previous district commissioner who initiated this effort.
Well, look who's finishing it though. It's great. Okay. Thank you. Yes, it's all good. Thank you. Yes.
Well, it took you five years, but that's okay.
We've only been in office for four years, but thank you. You've been around for about a decade and look at that. Okay. Thank you, Anthony.
Anthony Farhada, City of Fort Lauderdale. So fundamentally, a lot of what you heard, we don't disagree with. We, we, for, for instance, the issue with the density, there are caps on the beach that already address density. We have the trip counts. We also have the available residential units that are allowed on the beach. So from the perspective that it does drive a larger unit type and that influences the type of product that you get, I mean, from a staff perspective, we don't have a problem with that recommendation. The FAR, which was discussed, there are some things that we heard between the Planning and Zoning Board and moving forward to the city commission that we weren't able to amend in the ordinance, but we put in the CAM to recognize which ones we really don't have a problem with. FAR, the discussion was that FAR at four may not be suitable because it would reduce the developable area. I can understand that argument because we are introducing floor plate maximums. We are introducing tower step backs and we're introducing different setbacks in the front based on the street cross section that weren't existing in the code before. So from a certain perspective, FAR is a tool to control mass and scale. Those also control mass and scale. So.
Are you in agreement that we don't need it in the MBRA and the IOA?
So those are two of the areas where we added it. So based on those other tools that we have, I don't think it's a problem to remove it. If you wanted to increase it, you could do that too. That's another option. That was discussed. But we want to do the stakeholders, that maybe a better number would be six rather than four. But I am actually good with either of those options.
But what about the step back? What about the zero setback?
Well, I was, right, I was going to just get to that. What about the zero side and rear setback?
So the side and rear setbacks that, we only added it to one area, which was SLA. In the PRD, you already had side setbacks that were set at zero. And the reason we advocated for setting the SLA setbacks at zero is because a majority of the area that's been developed in SLA does not have current setbacks. So you look at like where the parrot is and across the street, those buildings butt right up against each other. We're not opposed to setbacks, but from a certain extent, the development pattern had been established. And in the PRD, the, the requirement is zero today.
All right. So that would keep it consistent with what's already there?
Yes.
Okay.
How many places is it beside SLA? Is it the zero?
We're only proposing in PRD and SLA. Well, PRD is not a change, so we're only really proposing it in SLA.
Again, I, I would maybe think about that. I, I, I think it's nice, and I know that area really well, and I'm hoping that we're going to.
SLA is Sunrise Lane?
Right.
Yes.
And I'm hoping we're going to.
The proposed project is?
Yes, that was, that's butting directly on Sunrise Boulevard. That takes up a whole block. That's not really, you're not.
I know, but you want, you're going to, if we, if we approve this, it would allow them to build right up against Sunrise.
No, there's still, there's still a step back, well, I don't know if.
There's a sidewalk.
To the front or the rear. So we'd have to take a look at that. I can't recall what the SLA plan said.
Right. I think we're just talking about side and rear in terms of the zero.
Yes.
Just side.
Yeah. Well, that's upright up against, which, what do you call a side? The side is right along Sunrise.
So you do have cases where you have properties that have dual frontages? And our code defines what a front setback is and it's the setback across from the rear setback and.
But that's already in the process, Mayor. That would be grandfathered in. That would not apply to something that's in the process already.
Okay.
Yeah. So, okay. So I, I think we need to just look at that.
So, I mean, we would appreciate clear direction on what you'd like us to look at between the readings and we could definitely update the draft based on that direction. So if those items that were discussed are something that you support, we could definitely put it in for consideration at second reading.
Well, I, I, do you have, you feel comfortable with what we talked about this evening?
I didn't hear anything that I felt.
For purposes of the vote though, that you're going to vote as amended, you're going to need to, we're going to need to be clear as to what's being amended.
Yes. So I did, in the CAM, we did add, if you look on page.
What page? You're not amending anything. Because you're going to change it between. I'm sorry, what page? But we need to know what that is. What page? I'm sorry?
Page nine of 11 in the CAM.
Uh huh.
There were items that were discussed between the Planning and Zoning Board and tonight's meeting. And so we outlined those in bullet form. So for instance, in open space, we currently are recommending a, a language that looks at the number of units, so calculating open space based on the total number of units. But we also added a density calculation. It was pointed out to us and we are having an issue in the downtown with a project that has a similar calculation, that having those two together is causing somewhat of a conflict. You're still going to get open space because you still have it based per unit. We think taking the density calculation out of that is totally fine.
Okay. I see that and that's good. What about what we talked about earlier in terms of having that flexibility in the code that we don't necessarily have to be pigeonholed with only large units on a smaller parcel? Have you changed that in the CAM somewhere where?
We have not because density was not something that was part of the original direction for us to look at. And I think that's really a density question based on the number of units that are permitted per acre in those zoning districts.
Yeah.
So that's not touched on here. If that's something that you want us to look at.
Well, I, I think we should look at that only because, you know, especially now with housing prices and just prices of real estate in general, not everybody is going to be able to afford on a smaller parcel, just a $2 to $5 million condominium. I think we need to be able to have flexibility to build smaller units on some of these parcels. I just, I just.
I would suggest that if, and I would defer to maybe Alan or D. Wayne, since that wasn't something that was advertised in the original because we didn't have it as part of our direction, that we may need to come back as a separate item rather than changing it between first and second reading, but I'm good with either.
The only thing that's going to impact is the number of parking spaces, which if you have 50 smaller units as opposed to 25 larger units, you're going to have to, you're going to have to double the parking spaces.
Right. But I guess there's always the option of asking for a parking reduction and the flexibility that the commission would have, but.
I would remind, take this opportunity to remind the commission and, and Mayor Trentalos, you might remember this and so might Commissioner McKenzie, where was a Rich and Associates study that addressed a lot of the parking on the beach? It was done in 2014, so it may need to be updated or we could look at it again. But we did reduce a lot of the parking requirements on the beach. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that that had been addressed in a prior effort.
So Commissioner, are there, are there any specific requests that you have to modify the resolution?
No, just that one issue in particular that I don't think is in the CAM. But everything else, I think Anthony has added into the CAM that was not, well, actually incorporates some of the comments from Planning and Zoning. And I want to thank Planning and Zoning too. That went through lots of meetings. Although I am a little perplexed why it ended in a 5-4 vote at the end of the day. I couldn't tell whether it was just process that there were issues of, with, or the actual issues in the ordinance.
You have any thoughts on that? We, we believe it was more process, but I'm.
Yeah. It was tough following.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable at this point speaking.
Okay, no problem. That's okay.
Courtney did just remind me that Rich and Associates study did not address residential and currently the only areas we can do residential reductions is in the CRA.
Parking.
Parking reductions.
Parking.
My apologies, parking reductions.
Okay. Thank you.
Which doesn't exist anymore.
Okay. I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
So, so what are we amending in between the first two readings? I have height. Do we set, do we need to set any?
So if I could just go through the points in the back.
Yeah.
So we had the open space discussion, which was removing the density calculation and leaving in the per unit calculation. The second point was modification of tower step backs. Now, this is something that we allow to modify through our current language. I think as was said earlier by someone who spoke, that we did allow for variations, but they have to come to you to make those requests. Floor area ratio, I talked about that a little bit ago, given the other tools that we have based on floor plate. And tower step back and setbacks, we don't think that floor area is as important. It's more of a standalone item. The floor plate, we had the residential at 12,500. We had non-residential at 16,000. I think Ms. Crush brings up a good point. You know, it's 3,500 square feet. You're not really going to notice it from the ground. I don't think that moving it up to 16, 16,000 across the board is an unfair request. And then the last item is the sidewalk width. We had put in there, and I think that was something that we just missed. We added Seabreeze and Birch to the same width that we were asking for on A1A, which was 20 feet, which was excessive. So we're just adjusting those two, we agreed that we could adjust those two streets to our secondary streets, which would be at seven feet. And then for the other items that they brought up, which was the density, it, and the.
And the height?
What was the step back? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The density, we could definitely look at that between the two and, and work with the city attorney's office. And then we could address the setback issue and, and come back with something that you could consider.
Okay. I think we covered it.
And then did we cover height also? Did I miss that? Say that already?
We did not address height. If that's something you'd like us to look at. I would, I would add that, and I think it was mentioned, that the project that was mentioned was a PDD.
Right.
There is the ability to do that through a PDD if you meet the PDD requirements. But height's not something that we touched.
Right. That, that's the Celine, the PDD on the, the two towers by Cafe Casablanca.
But every property can't, you have to have a few properties together to really meet that criteria, right? I mean, you want to allow.
There's a minimum acreage requirement.
Yeah. Steve, you were talking about thinner and taller, you know, I don't know.
It's just going to depend on the size of the lot.
So can, or do we, do we want to write something in that gives flexibility for additional height? If they do something else?
Well, don't we always have that flexibility?
I'm sorry?
Don't we have, are you saying that it has to be PDD to have the flexibility for the extra height?
Well, in, in PRD, you, there's an existing point system that allows you to increase by a certain percentage. But mostly in the, in the beach, yes, you're stuck with the 120.
And what about the discussion that we heard tonight about the fact that some of this might preclude having two towers, even if there is the space and only being able to do one?
That was the first, I think, I've heard that. I'm not sure that we vetted that through staff. We could take a look at that as well.
Okay. Please do. That'd be great. So did, Vice Mayor, did you want to talk about?
Well, I think I wrote down in my notes, possibly going to 140 feet height if we need to allow some height as a flexibility if they're doing something down below. If it's a small lot or something, or if the setbacks, the towers, you know. I, I would hate to say there's something in there that caps it and we have no flexibility. I don't, I mean, I don't want to go to 500 feet. Not saying that. But I don't know. I don't want to create a whole ordinance or.
Was there any, I didn't really even notice much discussion in reading all of the P and Z minutes about height at all.
I don't recall any discussion about height at the P and Z. Yeah. I don't recall that either.
Never really seemed to come up as a.
They brought it up. They brought it up tonight, but...
So if we don't address height tonight, you can't bring it back later on, according to what Allen's saying?
No ordinance is finite. We can always make changes later on. If you adopted something...
Second reading.
You were saying we had to put everything in it tonight, am I correct?
Well, so we have clarity as to what we're proceeding with.
So if that's what you want, I would put that in there tonight.
I think the challenge with height is coming up with what that number is supposed to be. So for instance, I mentioned in the PRD, you can go up a certain percentage if you earn certain points. That's something that we could explore, or we could just explore increasing the height to a different cap.
So what's the height now?
We have not discussed that.
What's the height now?
Hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, and what's the recommendation?
Hundred and forty?
We didn't touch it.
Keep it at one-twenty?
Whatever the height was for each zoning district, we left it exactly.
Right, okay.
But it's not one-twenty everywhere.
No, NBRAs...
No, it varies.
Yeah. And I haven't really heard much discussion about height.
Right, so it's one-twenty in SLA, Iowa, NBRAs, SBMHA, and then you can go up to a cap of two hundred in PRD and ABA.
Right, two hundred?
Mm-hmm. Right, the point system adds to that.
Right, okay.
All right.
But some in the PRD, can't you go to two-eighty?
Two-forty.
Two-forty, okay.
So there is flexibility with height, with a point system?
Thank you, Smith, for this. It looks like.
It's just not, it's just not in all the districts.
Yeah, on the beach.
Does it work? Does that work for you, Steve?
Yeah, I think so. As I said, I really have not, you know, I've gone to all the meetings and I've, neighborhood meetings, and I've listened to... It just hasn't really been a big issue, and it really, and it didn't come up at all. If you look at the P&amp;Z minutes and all of the meetings that they've had, it really, it was never an issue.
Okay, anything else? There being nothing?
I probably would recommend that, and with respect to the CBA, that some of these changes, as he mentioned, we have not been able to present them to him. They didn't see them. So if we're gonna do this between first and second reading, we probably wanna do some outreach for them so they fully understand what...
Don't you have a meeting on the twenty-fourth? Maybe if you can, right? That'd be great.
If they can fit us in, we'll definitely make it work.
Yeah, that'd be good timing.
Okay.
All right, so we've moved to closed public hearing, correct? And now we just need someone to introduce the ordinance.
Introduce.
In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending section forty-seven dash twelve entitled Central Beach Districts of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, providing for correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved on first reading. OFR two, first reading ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, section forty-seven dash twenty-five point two adequacy requirements, and section forty-seven dash thirty-eight C, education mitigation to update the school level of service standard. No one signed up to speak? Anyone have any comments? There being none, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, specifically Article Five Development Review Criteria, section forty-seven dash twenty-five point two entitled Adequacy Requirements, and amending Article fourteen Additional Development Requirements, section forty-seven dash thirty-eight C entitled Education Mitigation to make consistent with the education element and capital improvement element of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale Twenty Twenty Comprehensive Plan in compliance with the third amended and restated interlocal agreement for public school facility planning, Broward County, Florida, updating school level of service standards and school capacity availability and public school concurrency provisions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and OFR two is approved on first reading. OFR three, first reading and ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, section forty-seven dash twenty-one. Thank you, folks, for being here. Relating to landscaping and tree preservation requirements. We had several people who have signed up to speak. I'll call your names, and three at a time. We have Ryan Emmer, followed by DeAndre Francis, followed by Nancy Long. Is Ryan here? Hello, Ryan. Followed by DeAndre Francis, followed by Nancy Long.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I am a longtime resident of Fort Lauderdale, grew up here, went to Pinecrest, also am a single-family home builder. I read every page of this ordinance, every single page, and there's some things that are questionable, and there's some things that are really, really bad, so I oppose it. One of the, I'm just gonna go down a list of points. One of the points that I think is really bad is the requirement for modular suspensions and structural soil when planting a tree within six feet of a sidewalk, hardscape, or utility. Just to give you an example, I just built a house, I think in your district, Mr. McKenzie, at twenty-seven ninety-one Northwest Twenty-third Street, in affordable housing. I counted out of the seven trees I planted, five of those trees were within six feet of a sidewalk because they were street trees, or within a walkway you'd consider a hardscape or a utility. My total landscaping bill for my entire house was six thousand dollars. I asked my architect how much it would cost for modular suspension for one tree, and she told me it would cost anywhere from four to five thousand dollars per tree for modular suspension. So if this ordinance were to be passed as written, my landscaping bill for this affordable housing product that I built would have gone from about six thousand dollars to twenty-six thousand dollars. All for, you know, we've been building houses for how long? And look, if you put a tree smack in the middle of the sidewalk with no soil or anything around it in a downtown district, I can understand a modular suspension, but this is an extremely expensive proposal they're putting in here with really no added benefit that'll significantly add to the cost of building. Looks like my time zone was up. The soil requirements that they're putting in, in my opinion, are unneeded. And in addition to that, the changing of the definition of the specimen trees, they are lowering it from seventy percent to sixty percent, and they are changing the definition where it used to be eighteen inches for a large tree. They are now making it thirteen for a medium and eight for a small tree. And I think the overall net effect of lowering the requirements for specimen trees is it makes it a much wider set of trees that will be far more costly to remove. And the net effect is that it's gonna make it a lot more difficult for small-time developers like me and other people to buy vacant lots and take older existing housing product and redevelop it into something nicer and newer. They're also massively increasing the cost of trees, of removal of trees. It used to be, if you look at the current... Do I get a grace period or no?
I would say keep going.
Okay, so it used to be, if you look at the current ordinance, it is sixty-five dollars per caliper inch multiplied times a percentage based on the classification of tree, depending on A to D or E, and depending on the condition of the tree. And now what they are doing is they are changing the cost to remove a specimen tree based off of times, two-point-five times the wholesale cost of, it's actually, I don't really understand it because it's very vague. It seems like they're, when I calculated it out, when I talked to one of the representatives who wrote this, they're quadrupling and quintupling the tree, quintupling the cost of removing the trees, and I think, overall, I think what you're gonna do is, I think you're gonna have the opposite effect of what the intended purpose is, and the intended purpose is to increase the tree canopy and to protect trees. And I think what's, I think the opposite is gonna happen, because, you know, prohibition doesn't work, right? Like when they did prohibition in the twenties, everybody just opened speakeasies and started drinking. And I think by making it far more difficult to remove trees and by drastically increasing the cost to remove trees, I think people are going to do it without city approval, or they'll take advantage of the two thousand nineteen state Florida law, which I'm sure you guys are aware of, that allows you to remove a tree just with an arborist letter. All you have to do is get an arborist to sign off on whether a tree is a hazard to person or place, and you can remove a tree without any city approval whatsoever. So instead of a person saying, hey, you know what, maybe this tree is a hazard, maybe it's not, let me just leave it there because if I ever wanna remove it, the city rules aren't so onerous. People are gonna look at an ordinance like this and see the insane cost and the difficulty of removing a tree, and instead of maybe leaving it, or instead of letting it grow, they're gonna think, wow, if this two thousand nineteen Florida law ever does expire, I'm gonna be stuck with a city ordinance that's gonna make it impossible for me, or too costly to remove a tree. And you may have the opposite effect where people are taking advantage of this two thousand nineteen ordinance to remove trees while they can at a price that's not egregious, so...
All right, thank you, Ryan. Thank you.
Yeah, I oppose.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you.
Followed by Nancy Long, followed by Mary Fertig.
How you guys doing today? My name is DeAndre Francis. I'm a designer and new developer in this area here. That guy right there said a mouthful.
I need you to speak into the microphone. I can't...
That guy right there just said a mouthful. I don't know how he got my notes, but he said everything I was about to say to you guys. All right, so thank you. Have a good day.
Are you a contractor or something?
Yes, I am.
So I was just gonna, and I didn't know that prior to, nor did I know he was a contractor.
With the landscaping and material costs going on, affordable housing, because I specialize in affordable housing, everything is going up. So if we wanna save us up, I wanna do a house for, we're calling it about two hundred thousand, now I'm like two fifty, two seventy-five. So with the landscaping and remove the trees, it's really killing our profit and also for it to be able to build it affordable right now, so.
Okay.
All right, guys?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Nancy Long, followed by Mary Fertig, followed by Doug Coleman, followed by Fred Stressaw.
Hello, everybody. I'm Nancy Long. I'm the president of River Oak Civic Association, and I'm here to speak for all of our tree lovers. Most of our association is older communities, people in their forties, lived there forty, fifty years. Our trees are magnificent, and our problem is these developers come in and they just tear out the trees because it's easier for them to build and replace them with smaller trees that will take generations to see the beauty that we have now. By saving money, by killing our trees, they should save money somewhere else. They shouldn't build around our trees. They should respect our trees. We've lived with them all these years, and they just do it illegally, and right now the fees that they charge for illegally taking down trees is so minimal, they come in and do it and just pay, you know, a few hundred dollars. I think this ordinance will help protect our trees, and I like the area where our arborists for the city will also come out and inspect the trees besides a developer hiring his own arborist. And we, we as citizens have some kind of speak-up to talk and help protect them because it's been drastic and the developments going on down here, we won't have any more trees. It gives us a shade. It helps with our breathing. It protects us from the noise from the airplanes and the roads, the traffic we have. So we are so for this ordinance, we can't wait for it to be passed. It's taken way too long to get this far, so we hope you pass it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mary, followed by Doug Coleman, followed by Fred Stressaw.
Hi, how are you? Okay, I first became aware of the process for updating the tree ordinance November fifth, twenty nineteen. I came to a conference meeting to talk about the travesty that happened near Stranahan High School, the destruction of the intact Old Growth Forest and Wildlife Oasis committed by Lennar Holmes in Riverside Park. Remember the city manager saying that day there was a, and I actually think that was in response to you asking in October for an update, and then it came in November. Okay. I remember the city manager saying that there was a staff committee working on the ordinance. I also remember being struck by the fact that there were no community members on the working group. And I remember mentioning the need for community members to be added to this because this was a huge issue, particularly what had just recently happened over in the Riverside Park neighborhood. So I wanna fast forward eighteen months. The ordinance was coming to Planning and Zoning. Doug Coleman and Fred Stressaw contacted me to see if they could talk to me before the meeting, and when we met, they explained to me about this advisory group that they had created, composed of landscape architect professionals and arborists. I was totally amazed by the number of volunteer hours that they had invested in drafting suggested updates to the policy. I guess the staff committee never really did get any community members, though they did meet with this landscape, this group of landscape professional and arborists a couple of times, but meeting with a community group and working at the same table with community members are two very different things. And so this has been to P&amp;Z several times, and I commend these ladies. They've come. They've brought up some really good points, the issue of specimen trees, which I'm gonna deviate for one second and say after listening to the first speaker, one thing that occurs to me is we have no incentives in this for specimen trees, and we need to be adding things like that. But with that said, I have three things I wanted to ask for tonight. One, bifurcate the ordinance and pass the section two and fifteen. Two, require the drafting and implementation of an urban forestry master plan. I think we need a plan for our city, and I'm not sure why there would be any pushback on this. And there's a lot of conversation about funding a plan and being able to take it out of the tree fund, but then there seems to be some pushback on actually creating a plan, so I hope by the end of tonight...
Mary, we're gonna be able to get that done. Mary, we're gonna be able to get that done.
That you will add that in as, thank you.
Anthony can, or whoever can kinda talk a little bit more about that.
Okay, and the third thing would be changing, it's changing, creating an ongoing city tree and landscape advisory board and charge the board with, among other things, working with the staff to develop the urban forestry master plan, also finalizing this ordinance and just kinda keeping current with what's happening in our community so that we can always be proactive in creating and enhancing the tree canopy. One last thing, Mayor, I'd like to mention that Lauderdale tomorrow has as one of its priorities for twenty twenty-two, preserving, protecting, and enhancing the tree canopy and enacting an urban forestry master plan. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Doug Coleman, followed by Fred Stressaw.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. My name is Doug Coleman. I'm here as one of the representatives of the advisory group. I do have a couple of letters I'd like to submit for the record.
You can use it to the clerk?
All right. From Jeremy Chancy and Mr. Harris, who are both arborists. Why are we the advisory group, a volunteer group of concerned professionals requesting additional modifications to the proposed landscape and tree ordinance before you tonight? Oversimplify, this ordinance has come a long way over nearly, over the last two years, but it's not where it needs to be. There are many reasons for this shortfall, starting with the departure of Mr. David Gennaro in two thousand fourteen, a registered landscape architect who headed the Landscape Plan Review Section of the Planning Department for twenty-five years and was never replaced. This was further exacerbated as the ordinance has been written, for the most part, by non-designers and individuals have not been trained as landscape architects or have practice, have, or have practice field experience. This was recognized and acknowledged by the City Planning and Zoning Board back in March twenty-one, who requested landscape architects be hired to assist staff with the rewrite, plus include more local design professionals, specifically landscape architects, as most of the recommendations were coming internally from staff, even though many public outreach programs were undertaken. This effort utilizing outside landscape architects and listening to more local landscape architects vastly improved the ordinance back in May and June of twenty-one. However, although many modifications proved the draft ordinance were discussed, changed, and/or agreed to, the next draft regressed backwards after months of more internal review by city staff. Even the hired landscape architecture consultants commented at the December fifteenth P&amp;Z meeting that everyone did not get what they wanted, even these hired landscape architecture consultants. The artist rewrite was originally to modify only section fourteen tree preservation, but somehow morphed into a complete rewrite except for section nine irrigation. Ironically, most of the tree preservation, section fourteen, forty-seven, twenty-one, fifteen, is generally acceptable and beneficial to protecting our tree canopy, which is what ninety-five percent of the stakeholders are... and beneficial to protecting our tree canopy, which is what 95% of the stakeholders requested during the public input. However, the public should be aware that the cost to mitigate a tree has been increased significantly from the 2015 ordinance and also indexed for inflation. Additionally, the Tree Canopy Trust Fund has been modified to allow for the increased use of funds from 20% to 25% on an annual basis for the non-planning of trees, which now includes costly studies and updates. In general, this ordinance has been requiring maximum versus minimums, it's over-reaching in many areas, and not allowing for design creativity. A code should be a minimum requirement, not over-prescribe or designed by numbers. Every site has different constraints and should be designed accordingly by design professionals. Commission, we respectfully request you bifurcate the ordinance and approve only sections, two sections of the ordinance, definitions, Sections 2, 47, 21, 2, as-is, and tree preservation, Section 14, 47, 21, 15, with advisory group amendments 7, 8, 9, and 10. This leaves the balance of the 215 ordinance intact until the balance of the ordinance can be properly reviewed outside of COVID-19 protocols and within the new requirements of the urban forestry master plan. Note, this allows for the revisions to the Tree Canopy Trust Fund, which provides for an urban forestry master plan, and the new mitigation fees to move forward while the balance of the ordinance is reviewed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Fred Stressaw?
Is there an Elmo up here?
It's right there.
Oh, it's here. Oh, thank you. We don't really know how to do this, but I'm, I'm doing it, so if it's a mistake, it's not his fault.
Elmo, it's like a... You want me to explain it to you?
I thought she'd be around here somewhere.
Teacher's thing.
I couldn't hear her.
Okay. You see an Elmo?
What are we doing?
Give me a cookie.
First. That's the first one.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
I think we're organized. Fred Stressaw, 1004, northeast, southeast, 8th Street, 7th Street. I'm a new resident.
Did you move?
Just moved. Just moved. We called-
I'm sure you can find your way home tonight. Mary is moving closer to me.
Got it, got it, that. I go by his house every night and he's always working.
Time to relocate, Commissioner.
Okay. I'm going to try to talk less and show you a bit of video if I can, if Mary works on this. I guess that our group feels as though that the entire ordinance is over-prescriptive, and I have sorted through dozens of slides, pictures, verbiage, and I'm going to try to keep it fairly simple. The first one is onto the Florida-friendly landscape. On the top photograph is the intersection of Bayview and Sunrise Boulevard, and the bottom picture is of the La Solis Oceanside Park. Neither one of these city projects have any natives, and the Oceanside Park does not meet the canopy requirement for the upcoming ordinance. The next, we were the landscape architects on Dr. Kennedy Holmes, won a state design award for it, and it addresses the section on other zoning areas. It, it concerns the trees for the net lot area, and the current proposed code increases by fourfold the number of trees that are required on that site, and if you kind of squint at it, it's very difficult, but that's, that, that plan is 10 years old.
Fred, Fred, wait, put that slide back, Mary. There's a comment underneath there that says, "The increased percentages of shade trees will result in little or no open space when the, when the trees are required to fill in the spaces between the buildings." What's the difference between open space and areas where trees are planted? Isn't that where open space-
I think that in a multifamily housing project, there needs to be some open space for the kids to play.
Well, can't kids play under trees?
Okay, let's move on on that one. No, I, I, you know, have a hard time.
I were somebody who wouldn't want to be under a tree because it's so hot out.
I, I coach, I coach hardball for the kids when they were 10 or 11, and one of the finest examples that I can say is when the ball came off the bat and fell into the trees, the little kid in centerfield went like this because he was under the tree and he couldn't tell where it was.
You know, baseball diamonds and, you know, soccer fields, that, those are different, but you're not going to put those between buildings.
I think if you look at this particular slide and, and, and the image underneath that, you'll see that there are so many trees on this site that to try to triple the number of trees, which is what the code requires, cannot be done.
Okay, well-
Okay.
It's okay, I understand what you're saying, I don't know if I agree with it, but-
It's okay, let's, I'm going to finish this.
The more shade, the better, but-
I think that there's a lot of shade, and I would invite everybody to go out there and look. The bottom slide is-
What about the top slide? What about the top side? Where's all that shade? I see one tree.
Actually, that tree on the left side was designed and planted by my dad, who did the original landscape design for Kennedy Holmes in 1941 before he went off to the war. And I have the drawings that he prepared with his signature on it. Okay, going to move on. I want to talk about street trees. The current code doubles the number of street trees, it eliminates the use of sable palms. There you go.
Well, sable palms are not shade trees.
We're not talking about shade trees, we're talking about a code that, that requires both shade trees and palms and fruit trees and flowering trees.
Right.
And they have reduced the quantity of, of flowering trees and palm trees in lieu of increasing the shade trees for the overall site for the street trees.
Fred, is everything you're talking about falling under the landscape ordinance or the tree preservation?
No, sorry. I meant to start this conversation with that.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Everybody, everybody that has spoken is talking about the tree preservation, and I got elected to speak to the other half of the ordinance, which is, when I say half, it is in fact about 40 pages that has to do with design.
Which is the landscape ordinance.
Which is the landscape ordinance.
Right. So, Mayor, there's just multiple concerns, I've just been involved with this before. There's just multiple concerns with the landscape ordinance. I think still needs more work around this. Fred's lifting up some of the concerns, so we can keep hearing all of the concerns with landscape ordinance, or we can say, got it, we understand their major concerns with landscape. Just as a kind of quick overview. Well, the thing is, it doesn't sound to me as if this ordinance is ripe for decision. Clearly, it needs more tweaking, and, and Commissioner, if you're on top of this, you know, I would encourage you to, you know, be our representative in the discussions with the community on, on this ordinance if possible, and anybody else on the commission obviously has, has the ability to do the same, but- Yeah. I just think that, I'm just listening to everybody tonight, and it just sounds like it's coming from too many different directions to think that we have, you know, we have cobbled together the right combination of, of requirements and opportunities to make this what's appropriate for our city. So, what do you say?
Well, if we, if we bifurcate it like was suggested, do you think we're ready to move forward with the tree preservation with a few amendments, and then if we form this committee-
Yeah, right.
They can work with the landscape ordinance.
Right, Vice Mayor, I think, I think that's the right direction. I just have a couple of questions on the, on the tree preservation ordinance. But yeah, I think we could get that done maybe tonight, Mayor. The concern I have with delaying the tree preservation ordinance is just the continued time of, of loss of canopy, so I just-
If I can note though, bifurcation is going to be very difficult because they're interrelated, it's, it's, it's almost impossible, because they're too interrelated between the two sections. The deletions and additions kind of interplay together, so divorcing the two would be a monumental task.
So why don't we defer? Then let's just wait, yeah. Let's just wait. Let's put, so I guess two questions, Mayor, I think. If it, if it can't be bifurcated by, according to our city attorney, I think we delay it. I think the two kind of, two outstanding questions that would be helpful, I got a couple of questions I'd just like to get city staff to answer as we just- Do you want to do it now, or do you want to- Yeah, do it now, I'll be quick. Okay. So, so Mr. Stressaw, we're going to, I think the, the, the mood of the commission tonight is not to make any decision tonight, so-
Great, I'll stop.
You win, you win. Being passive aggressive.
No, I want to, I want to make one point if I can. The-
I've got it, I've got it.
Stop.
My helper here quit on me. She spent too much time at City Hall and is brain-dead.
Thank you. We're rubbing off on her, not a good idea.
Did I do that? Okay.
Did you just call Mary brain-dead?
No.
I said, everybody, everybody, I think you've had enough fun for the day. I wanted to make a point-
I'll drink to that.
Then, then the new ordinance, in any new ordinance, there's always rewards and there's always risks, and I wanted to-
But we try to minimize the risk.
Because I spent seven years on the utility advisory committee, I was particularly, it doesn't make any difference.
Okay, I think this one's good, I like it.
Is, I wanted everybody to appreciate that when you put shade trees six feet from the edge of the road, somewhere down the line, there's going to be a problem, and-
What's your point? Now, we agree with you, we understand. We understand.
You know, I think I get-
But shade trees are important to the, especially in the urban, in the urban downtown. Shade trees are important in order to encourage pedestrian usage. If you don't have shade trees, you're not going to have anyone using the streets.
So, can I, I'm just going to say one quick thing, it's just really quick, and I didn't use all my time, so I forgot to read one of the paragraphs. I am so amazed by what this group of volunteers has done. They have just dedicated thousands of hours to this, and they have so much knowledge. So the first time I met with them, they were sharing with me some of their projects, and I'm going to give you a couple so you can then do what I did. As I drove around town, I looked. I'm going to pick one that I pass every day, Virginia Schuman Young. I remember when that school opened and what those trees looked like then, and I ask you to go by and look like what they're like now, so that we can imagine not just planting the tree, but letting it reach its full glory. As you know, I live in, I live in an old house, I have an old office, we have some beautiful trees, and I, I think they might have started out smaller, but they're beautiful, and we need to plan for that canopy. And so, I think this is a, I don't know if I'm saying that right, Fred, but I would invite you as you drive around town to look at some of the older trees and think about how you, what conditions you want to put in place so that the trees we're planting today can grow and mature and be beautiful in the future.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor, can I- We'll conclude, we'll conclude the comment right now.
Done.
All right, and-
We're done.
Commissioner Sorensen, you had a couple of questions. Yeah, just, Greg, can I get the, whoever the main staff person you'd like?
Can you put this in order for David? Before we leave.
Nancy Yasman, Assistant Public Works Director in Charge of Sustainability.
Nancy, thanks. Couple things. One, and I forget if I was talking to Anthony or who I was talking to, but the idea of if I'm remembering right, there is some degree of funding or opportunity for the urban forestry master plan, are you-
So as part of, as part of the new regulations, the requirements and allowable uses of the Tree Canopy Trust Fund were amended to allow for funding to fund an urban tree master plan.
Great, awesome, so that's in, in the works, or?
That's in the proposed ordinance before you.
Perfect. Advisory board, having some form of a, of a little, maybe a little bit more formal advisory board, and I don't know, it doesn't even really have to be formal, in my view, but can we have some type of, I don't know who I'm directing this to, can they continue to have these discussions with staff, Alan?
I mean, they can have discussions with staff, I mean, they're not an official board by any means, so they don't, they don't represent the city in any way, shape, or form, so-
Right.
If they're, if you're looking for them to advise you, they'd have to be formalized.
I, Mayor, I mean, it's up to the commission, obviously, but I mean, I think we can keep it as an informal working group that's working with the staff, continue to improve this, these two, the ordinance. So, that's okay, I think. I think, I think that makes sense. They can get, they can, they can get there, okay. That's that. Nancy, the, the point the young man brought up about the modular suspension, any feedback on that?
Sure, I'm going to ask Glenn Hadwin to handle that, please.
Yeah, thanks.
Actually, I'm going to hand that off to our consultant landscape architect, Mike Connor from CJN.
Great, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and City Manager. My name is Mike Connor, I'm with Calvin G. Donovan Associates and Safe Build Company. We were hired in March, April of this year of '21, I should say, to assist with building consensus on this ordinance and bringing it to the planning and zoning board, and then ultimately to the city commission. And that's exactly what we have done. First of all, I know we have some esteemed colleagues that have gotten up to speak, and I want to speak a little bit about the credentials and the qualifications that I bring to the table to you tonight, in terms of helping with the city draft this ordinance. I moved to Fort Lauderdale in 1985, I've been practicing for 35 years plus. I'm a registered landscape architect and a certified ISA arborist. I'm the past president of the Florida Urban Forestry Council, I'm the past president of the Point Setta Heights Civic Association, which I've lived there since 1990, and I'm the, I passed section chair of the Broward ASLA. So, in my capacity professionally, I've worked for the city of Cooper City, developing their ordinance and enforcing it, and I've also worked as a consultant for cities, Weston, Davie, Oakland Park, North Lauderdale, developing and revising and updating their ordinances, as well as working on projects that we have to work under other ordinances of other cities. So with that said, in background, I want to kind of rehearse a little bit about the timeline and what we've been doing. When we were brought on, we kind of read through all of the history of how we'd gotten to where we were. We had 30 items or so from the planning and zoning board and the advisory group that were issues that needed to be resolved. We had three meetings with them, additional meetings with city staff, built a consensus on all of 30 of those items, put those into an ordinance, put that out there, got it approved by Broward County, got it approved or reviewed by the city attorney's office, and then brought it to the P&amp;Z planning and zoning board. Then we had comments and input from the planning and zoning board and members from the public at that, at that first meeting in November. We came back in December, addressed another 15 or 20 comments and things that we put into the ordinance. So that's how we got to where we are today. Next, I would like to address some of the comments that were made by the public speakers that are totally not true. The ordinance did not increase the number of trees required in any zoning district whatsoever. No. What the draft ordinance does is changing the language from, say, requiring 50 or 75 or 80% of the trees to be shade trees, to now taking the tree, the city's tree list and classifying them as large, medium, and small trees, because all trees provide some sort of shade. So what we've done is we've allowed more flexibility in design by saying, okay, half of the trees need to be either large or medium, not all large, large or medium-sized trees. A certain percentage can be small trees, a certain percentage can be palms. So you're still allowed palms, cabbage palms are perfectly acceptable, native tree can be planted in any project, as long as it doesn't, as long as you meet the other requirements for the large trees and medium trees. What this does is this allows flexibility. If one of the speakers said that they would have, they had six trees in their development where they were within six tree, six feet of the sidewalk, this only comes into play if they're planting a large or medium tree. If they were planting a small tree, which is the right tree for the right place, those roots won't be an issue and they don't have the extra cost of doing it.
So they don't need the modular?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
It's a distinct family.
Okay.
If they want to plant an oak tree that close to the sidewalk, or in a square that's not wide enough, then let's go ahead and put in the structural soil or the modular suspended pavement system under that piece of sidewalk, so that we're not replacing that sidewalk time and time again as that tree continues to grow. So this is, again, it's built-in flexibility. The developer or the property owner has options. You either do this, if you can't do that, and you want to do this, then you might have to do something else. So, we're not forcing them to have to use those things, we're just saying, plant the right tree in the right place, and if you don't do that, then you need to take other measures.
So here's, I know probably extending that- So, here's, I know probably extending this is the last thing you and the staff wants to hear because you all have been doing, I think, is great work and long time work. So, maybe part of this is just helping folks understand kind of the flexibility that maybe they don't so far. So, that might be, it just might be part of that and it, and there might also be some differing interpretations that your expertise can come in and help. So, we, there, there might actually not be a lot of changing to the, to part of this. But I'd say, Mayor, if possible, and again, I really appreciate all the staff doing work on this, if we could set, you know, whether it's, you know, a month from now, you know, March 15th or a date certain when, hey, by then, could we have the updated language back to us as commission? Is a thought.
So, there's a motion to defer this item.
Can I ask the young man a question?
Wait a minute, there's a motion to defer this item.
Before that. Can I ask a question?
Wait, 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 there's a motion to defer, you can ask a question just a minute. A motion to defer to which date?
I'll say March 15th.
March 15th, okay. Do I hear a second?
Before you do that, Mayor, if you defer, the, the one thing though is if the changes are significant and substantive enough, you're going to have to go back to planning. Your local planning agency is going to have to take a look at this, so you're going to have to go back to planning and zoning.
And we may additionally have to go back to Broward County because the ordinance must comply with Broward County's tree ordinance requirements. And so, any, any change may result not only in having to go back to P and Z, but having to go back to Broward County for an additional review. So, at this point, you're really talking about a minimum delay of an additional three to six months.
Well, we don't know if the changes are going to be that substantive. I just think, it sounds to me like we just need to explain these changes a little bit better because I, this is, this made things much clearer than what we heard through the, the testimony of the individuals who spoke tonight.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges, Mayor, is that we've been dealing with a moving target. The 30 items that we originally addressed and came into consensus on, additional items keep coming up with every new revision. And so, I'm, I'm not sure how we come to a point where we stop. We've been at this for over two and a half years and any good public policy finds the balance between what all different stakeholders would like. And at this point, we feel we've accomplished that.
Yeah, they, they have been working really hard on that. So, here's a suggestion.
We've had 27 public meetings on this ordinance.
Here's a suggestion, Mayor.
Well, I want to see 30.
Right, get to 30. Here's a suggestion. I'm happy to, like, be involved in this and, and try to.
I'll tell you what, why don't we, why don't we take action tonight? This is a first, this is first reading, right? This is first reading. So, why don't we take action on it tonight? And if there's any significant, if there are any minor modifications, though, can be, those can be done between first and second reading. If there are major modifications, as the city attorney and as Dr. Gassman said, it needs far more review and has to go back to the county, which, which I don't think we, we want to happen. So, if there are minor modifications, if Commissioner, you go out and try to tweak this, I think those would come within the purview of what a second reading would permit and I think that's the way we should go. What do you think?
I'm, I'm open to that. I just don't know, Alan, what constitutes a too, too much of a change of second.
He'll tell you.
That's, that's going to depend on what those changes are. I mean, I know that, well, we've had a lot of conversations and I think these things have been explained. It's just, there's disagreement.
Sure.
Our office has gone back and forth and we've had to re-change things again and again. So, I think you're, you're going to get a similar discourse, but that, that's fine. We're not going to know exactly until we go back to.
Come back.
The drawing table.
What's the time allowance between first and second?
There isn't, you just have to, if, if you're going to defer it to another, if you're going to not act tonight and defer, you have to have a date certain.
Right.
But again, that's going to be contingent on the type of changes, then it may or may not.
So, if we approve a first reading, we don't need a date certain for the second?
Well, no, not necessarily, right? It'll be rescheduled. Well, it depends, no, it has been advertised. Yeah, it's been advertised, so you, the next time, you'd have to defer at that point.
All right, so why don't we take action on this tonight and then we'll see what happens in the interim?
And so, in the interim, go ahead, Alan.
If you are designating Commissioner Sorenson to actually work with the group and make changes and if you're designating him, those meetings will have to be public, just so you know.
Yeah, well, anybody can speak with anybody. It does, we're not designating Commissioner Sorenson. Any, any member of this commission can work with staff and, and members of the public. So, I don't want to get into that morass of designating a, you know.
Okay, well, that, just because that's what was stated earlier.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be helpful for one of us to be part, to help co-lead, co-facilitate these.
Well, I can tell you that I'm not going to be that person.
I'm happy to do it. That's what I'm saying.
I won't, I won't interfere, no.
Okay.
And I don't know whether Commissioner Glassman or McKenzie or the Vice Mayor is going to get involved.
No, but if Commissioner, if the press call, send him to the mayor.
Send him to the mayor.
Don't answer anything.
Exactly, exactly, I will.
So, you're hungry about trees.
All right, so, someone like to introduce the ordinance, so, so the motion fails for lack of a second. Commissioner McKenzie, you want to say something?
I did, but I mean, like, when you told me I couldn't ask a question, 13 more questions were asked.
Is there anything else you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I do. I wanted to, I wanted to speak more to this because I'm not understanding something. And I think Nancy answered a portion of my question, which was Broward County, you know, minimum requirements is what you're referring to, am I correct?
We, we are designated to have a tree program by being in compliance with certain regulations that are part of Broward County's ordinance related to tree protection. And so, any change that we would make that would change that opportunity to be consistent with Broward County's ordinance would have to be re-vetted with the county in order to maintain our tree protection program.
And I get that part and you actually helped me out when you first said it, so you didn't have to repeat it. But Anthony.
Thank you, Dr. Gassman, that was helpful. How does these changes impact? Let's use, for example, a smaller project, let's say a 50 by 100 lot, single-family house that meets our, our minimum requirements. What happens now to that minimum requirement on that size project? And the architect behind you also can speak to this as well, as well. He said it had no impact. I just want to make sure that the smaller builders not impacted in what we are trying to see not happen in the downtown or a specific area where we've seen trees replaced, moved without permission. And if we implement this, what is the impact to a smaller contractor, developer of this size? That's doing infill housing.
Yes, Commissioner, so it is a little difficult for me to drill down without having the ordinance and, and being able to review it. But from my recollection, because it is a very long document, it's got a lot of language. But from my recollection, it doesn't impact the individual property owner that way. Now, what the gentleman was probably referencing, or one of the things I did hear him reference, was the use of what are commonly referred to as silva cells. And our current ordinance doesn't have a requirement for that. So, we're, they, the, the new language did add requirements to the trees if they're within a certain distance of infrastructure, sidewalks, that type of thing. But it's my understanding the number of trees did not change. So, this, this classification of trees is something that did change. But in terms of the actual counts, I don't believe that that's something.
The counts are still there, just say, if I have the larger tree, it has to be moved closer to the sidewalk?
No, it's not, it's not about moving it closer to the sidewalk. But as you develop a property, you do have constraints based on where the building may go and other, and other apertments, as I was going to say, driveway or, or other structures. So, what they're saying is when we've installed trees or had installed trees in close proximity to those things before, over time, they have caused damage to that infrastructure. Good indic, well, not a good indication, but a good example is on Andrews Avenue and Third. As new projects came on board, the county wouldn't let us put in large shade trees because it was too close to various infrastructure that they owned and some of our own structures. So, we asked for suspended sidewalks and silva cells to help address that. Now, that's not addressing the individual property owner and I don't want to speak for the gentleman who was up here earlier, but it's my understanding that would only come into play if they were in proximity to those things. If the tree's in the middle of the front yard and is with, is outside of a certain distance, they wouldn't have to do that.
So, the 50, 100, 50 by 100 lot, proposed, uh, single-family dwelling is still going to have the minimum requirement for trees, shrubs, and pervious and impervious improvements, am I correct?
It's my understanding that that's correct.
So, they won't increase to double, triple, or quadruple?
Not for individual property owners like that, no, I don't believe so.
What about a property like Kennedy Homes?
So, a larger multifamily or non-residential development? I don't believe it changes the number of trees for that either. It just train, changed the classification of the types of trees that you can put in based on what the requirements were. There was no, there was no, in other words, there was no classification requirement before or it was very minimal.
So, how does this impact our, or does landscaping come under the building code requirements? Broward County and both sides?
Well, there is an issue with consistency with Broward County that I'm not as well-versed as Dr. Gassman and others are. In terms of our process, it's, it's the same as everything else. If it goes through a DRC process, that's reviewed at that point for the landscape plan. So, we would vet it against those. And for the individual property owners, they come, come in, as you know, they go directly to building permitting. So, zoning would, has a landscape division there that would look at it and make sure that they come into compliance. I don't know if that's answering your question.
So, when does this ordinance come into play in my process? So, is it two ordinances or just this is a review process?
No, I don't think, it's not changing in the review process. The review process is the same, so, single-family residential.
Nancy, you can help, you can help me out too. I just want to, I want the public to understand if his project's going to be impacted during our normal process of obtaining a permit to do a smaller project, because I know, I know this is intended for larger projects. Come on, Nancy, go ahead, you can talk. Dr. Gassman. I don't care who talks, I just want to understand.
No, I, I hear you, Sharon. I, I think that our, our consultant can better answer the question you're asking, so. Mike?
Okay. For a new single-family lot that's being developed, right? The requirements are the same as they were before. There's four trees required. Three trees in the front yard and one tree in the backyard. Instead of, instead, you have flexibility on what type of trees those can be. If you, and then you have a street tree requirement.
Nope, we're not going to talk from the back of the room.
So, in addition to that, you have a street tree requirement. And the street tree requirement, the change that we made with the street trees is that we are allowing, we're subtracting the driveways out of the calculation of the length of the frontage, so thereby potentially reducing the required number of trees there as well. Plus the flexibility of having different sized trees or palms being able to be planted for the street tree requirement. And/or staff has the ability in a special circumstance. If there's a big tree, you know, in the swale already or in the front yard and they don't have room to do those things, then there's flexibility from the department head and staff to adjust that so that we're not planting trees directly under another tree, which doesn't make any sense and it's not sustainable. The review process has been strengthened to require a landscape plan package. And what that is asking for is not just a, a landscape plan by itself, but the landscape plan in addition to the irrigation plan, in addition to any kind of lighting, utilities, electrical plan so that we can, the staff can kind of overlay those things and see where tree roots on existing tree that's trying to be preserved are not going to be disturbed during construction by trenching through it and building too close to it, those kinds of things. So, that, that landscape submission package has always been in place. We just tweaked it a little bit to address some of the problems that staff was having with these projects as they were coming through.
So, my understanding is exactly what you just said. And I've always had to submit a, if it's a vacant lot, a tree survey. A survey of those trees or some type of affidavit to identify that I'm not going to alter those trees or if I do, I have to go through a process where I gain permission through an application process. And then I'm getting, going through my other process, I meet the minimum requirement of landscape, which are the trees you indicated. Plus I have to have an irrigation plan submitted in a package already. So, these are nothing new to the table. These are, it's the same process. So, I, I'm just trying to figure out what is it that the young men in the audience are trying to say is the difference now that this plan would, would require in addition to?
Well, the, the lighting, electrical part of it, I think, is the part that's been kind of missing.
So, explain to me what lighting, electrical is, as if I had no clue.
The, the electrical engineer or the mechanical electrical plumbing usually associated with buildings and architects' plans. Sometimes they're subconsultants and they prepare a site lighting plan that shows the, the street lights or the site lighting, if it's a multifamily project.
You just hit it, so.
And, and those.
This mostly will take place on a multifamily and not a single-family, am I correct? Can we distinguish that language in there or does it have to apply to both?
It can be, it can be both. It can be both.
Right now, does it apply to both or just one?
It's both, because residential can have substantial lighting and, and underground conduits as well.
So, what if we go to, like, take the buildings for a single-family? And if it's a small project, how much lighting are you really going to get on that project? That would require us to get another discipline to come in and further increase that cost to the, the affordable product we're trying to put on the streets?
So, Commissioner, I have an, I have an example that I recall that might help illustrate this and it really isn't just about lighting. It would be about anything that would be subterranean that could conflict with the tree. So, and actually, this is something Mr. Stressaw brought me to. We did a site visit many years ago. He probably remembers what I'm talking about. It was the installation of a new, um, single-family residential home, had a large tree. And when they provided the original plans and what the consultant is mentioning, that overlay did not occur. So, what happened was when they put in the infrastructure for Storm, they cut into the ground and cut right through the roots of the tree, thus damaging the tree. And so, what we're, what's trying to be addressed is things like that. So, lighting could be one of them, but that's not something that's mandatory. So, you, you know, we want, we just want to make sure that when these trees are installed, that there's nothing that's going to be placed in, in proximity that could damage it during the installation of those additional.
Utilities.
Infrastructures, utilities, or that will conflict with the tree over the long term, if that helps answer the question.
I think you have and I'm just really trying to make a point to, to the public that clearly there's no difference in what we have on the books right now, other than.
We currently require information on the existing trees, as you said. Which ones are going to be protected, which ones are going to be removed. And then we require, if it's a, if it's a lot that doesn't have any trees, where those required, newly required trees are going to go. So, as was said earlier, we're not increasing the number of trees. It's just the standards by which those trees are installed based on where they may be on the site.
Thank you all.
Any further questions?
I do have a question for, for the gentleman, if you don't mind me asking one more.
This gentleman over there?
Yeah.
Sure, would you have to come up here?
Just hold on, come up here if you're going to do it.
Folks, we appreciate it.
It's going to be, thank you all. You helped me a lot. Go to the microphone. Don't shout, don't shout out. Don't pass me anything. Go to the podium. I don't take anything from the public. COVID.
I, I have the ordinance in front of me.
Smart. No, no, just, just, just help me understand.
I will. I'm going to read it to you.
And be brief.
I just need to scroll to my page and I'm going to read it to you. There not being, the, the last guy was the only guy who was being forthright with you. Um, I'm going to read to you this on page 37 of the ordinance. Page 37 of the ordinance, section O. Where large or medium, this is brand new. Where large or medium trees are to be planted within six feet of any proposed sidewalk, hardscape, or utility, then a modular suspended pavement system shall be installed in conjunction with root barriers when adjacent to utilities if needed under the paved area which has an H20 or H20 load rating in accordance from the HOA standard specifications for highway bridges. A subgrade soil medium or structure soil may be installed to connect open soil spaces. And then there's a bunch of other junk.
But I think that's, that's what they're saying.
So, well, yeah, but you, you're getting to the point, I think, of what is the difference? The difference is that this is very expensive.
If, if you're going to be coming into.
If you're going to, well, let me, let me get to what you're getting at. In a 50 by 100 lot, you get. In a fifty by a hundred lot, you get close to hardscape with nearly every tree. If you're on a corner lot like the house I built, I had to put four street trees, okay? So if you're on the swale, you're going to be within six feet of a sidewalk or a hardscape. On the tree, I was required to put three front trees. There is a walkway, that you have to have a walkway in the front of your house. So nearly every tree, that's why I said five out of the seven trees. The one in the back, I didn't have to have within six feet of a hardscape. But five out of the seven trees were within six feet of a hardscape. And this is before this code, this code hasn't been enacted, so I didn't put the.
Right, but I want to know how this code is going to impact him from the consultant.
Yeah, well.
I think I have my answer then.
So the answer is, is when you're on the street, you have to put large shade trees. You have to either put like a gumbo, limbo, or an oak. And the other ones were medium trees that I had to put. I don't even think I put a small tree, they were all large or medium trees. So I would have, under this new proposed code, I would have had to, so the number of trees did not change, and it's not going to change with the code. But the method of installation is going to change, and that's very expensive. Per tree, it's like three to five grand to install one of these modular suspension systems per tree on a house that's selling for like three hundred and something grand. You're talking about an extra, for what a landscaping would normally cost you six grand, you're talking about an extra twenty grand in just for modular suspension installation costs per tree. Maybe I could have replaced one of the larger medium trees with a small tree, but for the most part, still mostly large and medium trees.
Thank you, now I want the consultant to come back up. Address that issue in hypothetical dollars and sense the impact of his project.
Right.
Those three trees on the street side.
I, I'm glad that Ryan was able to come back up here and say that, because he's dealing with the current code.
I got the current code.
There are problems with the current codes that this draft ordinance addresses and fixes. So, under the new code, with the section that he just read, the very first statement was, for large or medium trees you shall. But, under the new code, he will have the flexibility of planting a large tree where he has room to do a large tree in the backyard. He may have small and medium trees in the front yard where there's not a lot of room. And he might be able to put palms in the swale if there's a requirement there and the swale is too narrow. Or if he wants to have an oak tree in the swale where it's too narrow and it's going to buckle the sidewalk, he can put in structural soil or a modular suspended pavement system under that portion of the sidewalk so the roots can go under there without lifting it up and causing the city to go fix it.
Is that a five thousand dollar?
That's more sustainable, in my opinion, and that's what we're after.
Is that a five thousand dollar increase to?
Not for the structural soil. The modular suspended pavement system gets a little bit pricier. I don't have exact cost, but there are three main companies that make this product now. It's been on the market for fifteen years. The price is going down all the time, they're very competitive.
So we're going to have time between, because we're going to act on it tonight, right Mayor?
Yes.
We'll have time between now and then for someone to come back and give me an actual price using the scenario that was presented by the builder and cost differences. So you said there's fifteen companies or however many companies you just said. Someone should be able to tell us on a fifty by one hundred lot, five trees, what would that cost be to put that system into that sidewalk to prevent future damage of the sidewalk or any utilities?
Yes, we can do that.
It just, and it doesn't have to be, I want just a price range, I want to be able to check. Check the checker.
Yeah.
Fair enough?
We good?
Great, so Chris, is it?
I didn't call you up, I don't know who you are, and I'm not going to entertain anyone else in addition to. Excuse me? No, no.
I'm signed in to speak.
Oh, that's, that's his job.
Did you already speak?
No.
That's his job.
I haven't, I don't have anything for you, what's your name?
Natalia Barongo, I was signed in to speak.
Yeah, he's got to do that.
Nancy Long? What'd you say your name was?
No, it's not.
Natalia Barongo.
I don't have you, I don't have you down.
I signed in.
Well, go ahead.
I just didn't want to.
She's got a sticker.
Okay, you were, did we accidentally put you down under the wrong?
Yeah, I, I put the number they told me to at the door.
She's sitting over there, I did see her over there.
Yeah, I was the one that's heads about to explode in the corner. Hi, Natalia Barongo.
It's on you.
I'm a landscape architect, part of the advisory group. I also live in Fort Lauderdale. And I'd, I want him to do my next pay raise if there's no increase in trees. So if I have a requirement of ten trees, and I can only do twenty percent can be palms. Right now, it's fifty percent can be palms, fifty percent to be trees. That seems like an increase of trees to me. Trees are not considered, as you quoted, is not a tree, right?
Say it again?
You said a palm is not a tree?
Is not a shade tree.
So they are reducing, right now is fifty percent of street trees can be palm trees. It's switching to seventy-five percent of street trees must be shade trees, medium or large.
Right.
That seems like an increase to me, so there's your number, that's what the increase is about. And that's throughout the ordinance, they do this. It might be the same number, but it's shade trees. We all know shade trees grow roots differently than palm trees. Takes up a lot more area. Kids playing underneath trees, there's roots they're going to be tripping on, frisbee becomes a contact sport. So there's other considerations. Last time I checked, we also live in the sunshine state. Palms go hand in hand with our look. Look at our website for Fort Lauderdale, it's all palm trees.
Yeah, but, but, but ma'am.
I agree.
The idea is, keep in mind that we're talking about, let's take for example Flagler Village, okay? If we're looking to try to create a tree canopy in order to encourage people to walk on sidewalks, palm trees have never been successful in that regard. That's the point here. The point here is to try to increase the tree canopy. And besides, it's not just for, it's not, it's actually environmentally more productive to have shade trees because they produce more, they produce more oxygen in the.
I know, I studied landscape architecture.
Okay, so.
I love trees, I'm not saying I don't, but I like flexibility in design.
You can have flexibility.
And I think there, it's not so much a code issue, it's a zoning issue, right? Because if you're leaving me little strips of, that someone can max out a piece of property and leave me little strips to plant in, and then I have to not plant by open space. So there's a tree per thousand square feet. That's not, it's little spots of a thousand square feet. Like, give me big green areas to plant trees. By zoning, not by fake structural things under the ground, which are a great tool in an urban setting, but for a homeowner to have to be obligated to do this because they're next to a sidewalk or next to, it seems a lot.
So are you in favor of this ordinance or not in favor of this?
Parts of it. And I hear, oh, we've been working on it for so many years. Well, I would like to, it to be done right. I mean, how long have you had a landscape architect?
Come on to our next meeting and we'll rock and roll.
I've been, I've been part of the advisory group.
Perfect, we'll be there for the next one.
Thank God that I have people like Fred and Doug that.
Absolutely.
Together because.
Come on to the next one, we'll be good to go. Chris, can I work with staff to coordinate a time to, so we can all get together?
Yeah, we can talk, let's talk about it tomorrow.
Perfect, sounds great.
Perfect, thank you.
You guys need to go to that meeting.
Okay, so do you hear, someone like to introduce the ordinance on first reading?
Wait, so we want to, we do want to move this tonight and then we'll take up the changes next time?
I was thinking that if we pass it tonight on first reading, we have until now and the second reading to make any adjustments. Any significant adjustments would require a totally different rewrite and review process. So let's just see how far we can get by doing it this way, and then we can assess it the second time it comes up at another meeting. So would someone like to introduce the ordinance then?
Introduced.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending section forty-seven dash twenty-one landscaping and tree preservation requirements of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinance Provisions Codification and Correction of Scrivener's Errors and for an Effective Date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Ellen. Please explain to me what happens from now and then.
So you're passing it on first reading. It appears the commissioner and staff along with the advisory group will try to work together to suggest any changes that everybody will be happy with. If those changes are minor enough where you all on the next meeting can pass it on second reading, great. If they're too substantive where we feel it has to go back to the Planning and Zoning Board in Broward County, we'll advise you of that. If they need more time at the next meeting, you can defer to a date certain that'll give them a little bit more time, so that gives you some flexibility.
Okay.
If they change the percentage ratio, is that something that has to go back to Broward County? That's something that the group can work out?
That I'm not sure, I'd have to defer to experts.
Let the commissioner figure that out with staff.
Hold on a second. Go ahead. It's great, I just want to make sure I have everything I need.
It's previous language that was stricken, so I don't believe it was ever a conflict with Broward County. We could definitely check, but if that's something that goes back in, I don't think it's a problem.
Okay.
Okay. Your vote?
I'll vote to move it forward, as long as we're flexible in what comes out of the meetings. To keep moving forward. I'm a contractor, I'm not, I really don't want to tour with too many things that are going to add additional costs, especially now with shortage of goods and services based from COVID. It's very difficult now to even get a door. A simple door that you pick up at Home Depot now is running you, you know, four to eight weeks. If you try to get ten doors, you can make, you may find one. Appliances are very hard to get now. If you don't start ordering appliances in the beginning of your project, you won't get them by the time you're ready to turn that product over to the consumer. It's just enough now on that industry than to add additional layers that will hurt that industry. So I'm just careful about what I do, but if we want to move forward in this endeavor, I'm willing to go as long as there's flexibility in there to get to a certain point and stop, so I'll support it.
Okay. Continue.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moreitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the item is approved on first reading. Thank you, everybody, for participating in this discussion. OSR one, this is an ordinance on second reading. An ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Downtown Rack Review Process and Special Regulations and with regard to development permits and procedures providing for corrections. This is a cleanup measure, Mr. Ferrardo? Mr. Ferrardo? Hello? Is this essentially a cleanup ordinance? Yes, this is the item on second reading. It was heard by the last meeting. These were attached to what we did for the downtown master plan codifications, and they were just little items that we got wrong, so we're fixing them. Okay. Any questions that anyone has with regard to OSR one? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending section forty-seven dash thirteen point twenty point D point seven entitled Downtown Rack Review Process and Special Regulations. And section forty-seven dash twenty-four entitled Development Permits and Procedures of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations to Correct Scrivener's Errors Provide for Severability Providing for Conflicts and Repeal Providing for Correction of Scrivener's Errors and Providing for an Effective Date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moreitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Just a point of information, did we have to do disclosures on this, even though it was just the second reading? But it was quasi judicial?
You don't have to do disclosures.
No, okay, thank you.
Yes or no?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. OSR two, there's a request to defer to March fifteenth. Mr. Shine, is that your request? Someone like to move to defer to March fifteen?
Move second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moreitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, so OSR two is now deferred to March fifteenth. Sorry you had to sit here all night, but.
I would be watching it on TV.
It was better than watching wrestling.
It's pretty close.
Okay, so we have a number of walk-on items, and then I have my reports after the meeting, which I hope you'll all stay for.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Wallow?
It's up to you all what order you want to take them in. I provided you copies, and there's six of them.
In the order in which you've presented them. So we have resolution number twenty-two. This is regarding opposing Senate Bill nine seventy-four, which would increase the statutory limits on tort liability claims. Right now, the sovereign immunity law maxes out the exposure that we have as a city to two hundred thousand. They want to raise it to one million. That's a big jump. And there's a resolution that's being suggested that we send to the legislature opposing this increase. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any questions? What happened to the vice mayor?
She got sick of us.
Okay.
I don't blame her.
Okay, so please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida opposing Senate Bill nine seventy-four and House Bill nine eighty-five in the twenty-twenty-two Florida legislative session urging all members of the Florida Legislature and Governor Ron DeSantis to oppose Senate Bill nine seventy-four and House Bill nine eighty-five, which if enacted would increase the statutory limits on liability for tort claims and judgments against local governments and providing for distribution direction to the city's state lobbyists and effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
I don't participate in resolutions, period.
So is that a yes or a no?
I do not participate in resolutions.
So a no?
No, it's not a no.
Well, you can't abstain.
I'm not doing, I'm not voting, I'm not participating in a resolution, period. I told you that when we put the voting records on the resolution itself, I'm not participating, I do not want to participate in resolutions, period. So you three, or who, five, four, two, one, do it.
All right, so. So if someone's on the dais, do they have to vote or should they leave the dais? Under Florida law, the only ability to abstain is if there is a financial conflict. Right, you should probably just leave.
I'm not leaving.
Okay, well, Florida law says you have to vote.
Florida law?
Well, that's what our attorney just told us. Okay.
Okay, keep going, keep going.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moreitas, not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, so the resolution regarding sovereign immunity, tort liability has been approved, and we authorize the city manager to send this to the state legislature. The next resolution that's being offered is a resolution opposing Senate Bill thirteen hundred and House Bill fourteen sixty-seven. And this would provide for adoption of district school board procedures for developing library media center collections, which procedures would include providing for the regular removal or discontinuance of books based on physical condition, rate of recent circulation, alignment to state academic standards, and relevancy to curriculum, out-of-date content and required removal pursuant to a policy regarding objection by a parent or a resident of the county to the use of a specific material and providing for distribution direction to the city's state lobbyists and an effective date. Someone like, any questions with regard to this? Does someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida opposing Senate Bill thirteen hundred and House Bill fourteen sixty-seven in the twenty-twenty-two Florida legislative session urging all members of the Florida Legislature and Governor Ron DeSantis to oppose Senate Bill thirteen hundred and House Bill fourteen sixty-seven, which if enacted would provide for the adoption of district school board procedures for developing library media center collections, which procedures would include providing for the regular removal or discontinuance of books based on, at a minimum, physical condition, rate of recent circulation, alignment of state academic standards, and relevancy to curriculum, curriculum, out-of-date content and required removal pursuant to a policy regarding an objection by a parent or a resident of the county to the use of a specific material and providing for distribution direction to the city's state lobbyists and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner McKenzie?
Well, please let the record reflect that there are only three commissioners, three members of the commission sitting on the dais.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Resolution to oppose Senate Bill 148 and House Bill 7, which enacted would make it unlawful, an unlawful employment practice, to subject an individual as a condition of employment, membership, or licensing to training or instruction that espouses, promotes, advances, inculcates, or compels such individual to believe that certain concepts constitute discrimination based on race, color, sex, or national origin, and would deem it to be discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, or sex to subject any public school student or employee to training or instruction. Any questions? Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida opposing Senate Bill 148 and House Bill 7 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session urging all members of the Florida Legislature and Governor Ron DeSantis to oppose Senate Bill 148 and House Bill 7, which, if enacted, would make unlawful employment practice, subjecting an individual as a condition of employment, membership, or licensing to training or instruction that espouses, promotes, advances, inculcates, or compels such individual to believe that certain concepts constitute discrimination based on race, color, sex, or national origin, and would deem it to be discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, or sex to subject any public school student or employee to training or instruction that espouses, promotes, advances, inculcates, or compels such student or employee to believe certain concepts and providing for distribution direction to the city's state lobbyists and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie is not present. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. The next resolution, this is a resolution opposing Senate Bills 1834 and 1820 and House Bills 1557 and 747. This is a bill to oppose, excuse me, this is a resolution to oppose the Senate Bill and House Bills, which enacted would ban discussion of sexual orientation or gender identity in primary grades, and if enacted would allow health care providers and insurers to deny a patient any sort of care on the basis of religious, moral, or ethical beliefs, and would create a license to discriminate by allowing for employment discrimination in health care. Any questions with regard to this? There being none, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida opposing Senate Bills 1834 and 1820 and House Bills 1557 and 747 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session urging all members of the Florida Legislature and Governor Ron DeSantis to oppose Senate Bill 1834 and House Bill 1557, which, if enacted, would ban discussion of sexual orientation or gender identity in primary grades, and Senate Bill 1820 and House Bill 747, which, if enacted, would allow health care providers and insurers to deny a patient any sort of care on the basis of religious, moral, or ethical beliefs, and would create a license to discriminate by allowing for employment discrimination in health care and providing for distribution direction to the city's state lobbyists and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie is not present. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next resolution, this is a resolution opposing Senate Bill 620 and House Bill 569, in which it would allow business damages to be ascertained against counties and municipalities in certain circumstances. Up to 15% of a business's profits.
Actually, Mayor, this is the legislation where if a business can demonstrate through the variety of enumerated ways in the statute that their business has been impacted 15% or more based on the ordinance you passed, then they could sue you, and there's really no limit, and they get attorney's fees and punitive damages.
Interesting.
Interesting.
Any questions? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Excuse me, introduce the resolution, I'm sorry.
Introduced.
Okay.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida opposing Senate Bill 620 and House Bill 569 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session urging all members of the Florida Legislature and Governor Ron DeSantis to oppose Senate Bill 620 and House Bill 569, which, if enacted, would allow business damages to be assessed against counties and municipalities in certain circumstances, and providing for distribution direction to the city's state lobbyists and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie is not present. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. This is a resolution opposing Senate Bill 510 and House Bill 301, which, if enacted, would require an annual full disclosure of financial interests, rather than the currently required limited disclosure of financial interests, and it would be imposed against all mayors, city commissioners, and other elected municipal officials, and city, county, town, or village managers.
There's an included attorney.
All right. Any questions? Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida opposing Senate Bill 510 and House Bill 301 in the 2022 Florida Legislative Session urging all members of the Florida Legislature and Governor Ron DeSantis to oppose Senate Bill 510 and House Bill 301, which, if enacted, would require mayors, city commissioners, other elected municipal officials, and city, county, town, or village managers to file an annual full disclosure of financial interest form rather than the currently required limited disclosure of financial interest form and providing for distribution direction to the city's state lobbyists and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie is not present. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Is there any further business of the city commission?
You have that one walk-on that you announced, the consent to assign, that was a motion to the six.
Consent of assignment of contract from All On Stage Productions, Inc. to BFAV LLC. Does that require a motion? That's a motion. Would someone like to make that motion?
Moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie? Not present. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that motion's approved. I have, I just want to resume my conference agenda, so I'm going to adjourn the evening agenda and then just go back to that. That would be the right procedure, I believe. Is there any further business of the city commission? No shade meetings, no closed door, no resolution?
No, I do have an announcement tonight that I just want to let you know. I had planned on asking the commission to stick around for an update on negotiations with International Association of Firefighters. I believe it's appropriate, though, to have everybody here, so I'm going to do that at the next meeting, so just plan that we'll have a shade, non-advertised meeting at the next meeting.
Okay, very good, all right. Okay, that meeting is now concluded, so I just have a couple of things I'd like to raise with the commission. Let's start with the easiest stuff, the WOW Awards. Have you noticed that we haven't been doing them?
Wow.
I know. So we contacted the members of the community appearance board, and it seems that the process kind of got waylaid because of COVID and people not, people not wanting to attend meetings, and what they did was they resumed the practice of giving awards, but they just went, they met as a group, and then they just went to the homeowner and told that person that they won the WOW Awards. I would like to see them come back when we can recognize the people in a public setting now that we're doing open meetings. What does the commission think regarding that?
I think they have to, actually. When we looked into that, there was...
What's that?
I think they have to.
Well, I want to be polite about it.
Right.
In the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance, so we don't even have to be polite about it, they just have to come back.
Okay. And you're all saying, why is he starting now? Okay, all right. Okay, so can that communication, Mr. Clerk, be directed to the WOW Award Committee?
I think that's already been, I think that's already in the works.
It's already been done.
Okay, all right. Florida East Coast Railroad right-of-way. FECR wants to raise the cost of the city leasing land along the railroad right-of-way for landscaping from a de minimis charge to charge of $20,000 a year. What do you know about that, Chris?
I know that we pushed back a little bit because this number just came out of nowhere, that, you're right, we were landscaping in the right-of-way. The response we got out of FECR was, well, the real value of the land is somewhere upwards of $700,000, so we had to pick a number, and so we picked 20,000. And, you know, it's just a, it's just a number that has no basis in any background, or it's just sort of grabbed out of the air, so...
Where's this landscaping?
It's a...
Is it over 10 miles of stretch of, I mean, where, that's a lot of money.
Yeah. Gosh, who on our team would be the right person to address that? Ben Rogers? No? Who are you pointing at?
Okay, get your jacket on. Put your shoes back on.
It's the slowest walk to the podium at 9:30.
It's very reluctant.
Good evening, Ben Rogers, Trail Station Mobility. Sorry for the slow walk, Mayor. Luis and I have been working on this together, and we've had different conversations, but the total area is about five miles, a little over five miles.
So $20,000 in the FECR right-of-way to put landscaping?
Where exactly?
Do you know the southern point? I'd have to find and get back with you. We do have an illustration of the land. In the negotiations, we were really focused on the future of Lauderdale and securing that property, but as you can imagine, we need a long-term lease for that, to develop that, and that's not what was being offered at this point, and so that's where we're at right now.
Is there, are we currently maintaining landscaping in this area?
Yes.
Conversely, it's not parking, because I think that's what they would probably look to do with it if we were not maintaining it. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's multiple, according to FECR, there's multiple businesses that are interested in securing individual leases along the right-of-way to create parking for their businesses.
So we want to keep landscaping there for aesthetic reasons, right? Because it's pretty.
I think for the long term, the goal was to have a development agreement so we could put in the Lauderdale in the right-of-way. But the conversations haven't gone that way, so I think we have to make a business decision if we want to pay the cost to mow the yard and landscape, or if we're willing to relinquish that and have them lease it totally.
Well, if we don't agree to this, will someone else supplant us and interfere with our ability to put the Lauderdale in that area?
So that's one of the challenges right now, and the uncertainty is, for Lauderdale to go in, we need a different type of agreement, a long-term development agreement, and what continually is being proposed is an annual landscaping agreement. So we haven't necessarily come to terms on Lauderdale. There's been conversations, and right now, that's where we're at in the point in conversation.
So, Chris, what do you think we should do?
You know, it's not that big of a number, and I guess, you know, I'd rather see, I'd rather see it not be parking, so, you know, if, I partly wanted to see what kind of response we'd get out of FECR as well, that they just picked this number for no really good reason.
Okay, we'll see if they'll go for it then. Anyone else have any comments? Okay. We talked about St. Patrick's Day, the downtown water pipe. Neighborhood Support Night. Apparently, we have some sort of policy that elected officials can't have a booth there. For example, the property appraiser wanted to have a booth and was denied that. I know the property appraiser is everywhere in all these events. Is there some reason why we've chosen to make that a policy under Neighborhood Support Night?
Other than I think we just didn't want the Neighborhood Support Night to turn political, I don't know the basis by which we've come up with that policy. Maybe it was to curb Marty's enthusiasm.
Yeah, but I mean, if it's not a political, if it's not a political table, but it's an elected official, those are two different things.
Right, I think the last time we looked at this, and I'd have to go back and look at it if I have no track, I think the last time we looked at this, the question came up, it was an election year, and there was an issue with this. Remember that they wanted to put a booth for the bonds? That came up. There was a political component to it the last time we looked at it, but I'd have to go back, I'd have to go back and look.
We've been asked to reconsider for next year, so we'll put that work in.
Okay, I mean...
Because remember the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Remember, because even if you're an elected official, I mean, obviously, if you're talking about, just like Marty or some, someone else, are you talking about these, you all?
Well, let's say Dean Trentalis, the mayor, wanted to have a booth there.
The problem you get into, you just have to be very careful, because you're not allowed to, for example, campaign, right, on city property?
Right.
So at what point are you using staff or are you on property? Are you doing this so that in two years from now, someone will vote for you? It's one of those things, those arguments that can be presented.
And your point is?
Point is that you're not supposed to campaign on city property.
Some policy has to be established where, you know, elected officials are public servants, and they do provide a service, and someone like the property appraiser, or the tax collector, or what about the supervisor of election? You know, we would want the supervisor of election to be on site, to do voter registration and things like that.
Yeah, I don't know why the policy was that. We'll take, I don't know that it's actually a policy, but we'll need to, we can take a look at it and see.
I think that the intent of the Neighborhood Night was to highlight what we do in-house. Now, if Mayor Dean Trentalis was coming from the city that he was mayor of and was in the crowd, we just, out of courtesy, always, you know, acknowledge elected officials. But to have a booth there, you open the door for everyone to contest, why can't I be there? And then you can't control, in my opinion, the politics of it. But Marty being in the crowd, I mean, he came up, he was on the stage with us, he talked about his office and what was going on with his office, but to, our intent when we did this was to highlight our departments, our staff, and give neighbors access to what we do here.
I get, you're right.
If you want to go down that road, I think we're going to open up the door for you and me to come back down and say, hey, you know, I want to put my thing there and tell them what I do in District 3, and District 2, and 1, and 4, and you just can't limit it to those offices.
Maybe we can exclude us, maybe we can exclude us, but...
No, but I'm saying, I'm using as an example.
Elected officials, like, you know, voter registration, we want that, you know, that's the thing.
But here's the problem, Mayor. Politicians straddle the fence. Okay, and we're going to take advantage of any opportunity that we get to highlight, showcase ourselves, especially in an election year, or if we're endorsing or supporting something, you know, I just think the way that we do it now, where you get to, you know, come and, you're like, hey, how you doing, and come on up, or give Commissioner McKenzie a hand, he's in the audience tonight, to allow them to put a booth there, and we don't control what they do, or the outcomes of their departments here. People in this room, we control the outcomes, and it was Neighborhood Support Night for our city and our employees and our residents in the City of Fort Lauderdale.
Is anyone, all right, does anyone else have any thoughts on this?
Well, we have a whole year to think about it.
I'm good with current elected officials having a booth. I think it's to educate neighbors.
As long as it's not done during an election year?
Yeah, and as long as it's not, well, as long as it's not campaigning.
Right.
It's providing information, there's property appraiser offers all kinds of discounts to veterans and all kinds of folks who need it, so I think that's helpful.
All right, so let's think about that, okay?
I think we need to redefine Neighborhood Support Night is, and then you can open up that door.
But if any of you want a dunking booth, we'll allow that.
Would someone turn off his mic, please?
He's getting punchy this late.
Couple more things. Now that we have a ramped-up Strategic Communications Department, I think we all appreciate the fact that Strategic Communications appears at events that we appear at, whether it be me or any of the commissioners, especially at events where the city itself is participating, whether the city supports the event, or buys a table, or something like that. I think that we should set a policy that someone from Strategic Communications should be attending those events, recording the events, putting it on our website, you know, showing the city's involvement and participation in some of these events, especially where we are actively, you know, involved in that. Does anyone have any thoughts on that? Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
What are we doing now?
Well, it's it's hit or miss. It's whatever Strategic Communications decides.
That's not how it used to be.
I know that.
So where did where did the disconnect?
The disconnect is that I think Strategic Communications is looking for direction from the City Commission.
Oh, that's different.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's my recommendation that wherever the city is either a sponsor or co-sponsor or has, you know. Let's say paid for a table or paid for average, not so much paid for advertising, but just is participating. I just think that Strategic Communications should be present, recording the event and putting those pictures on on our website to show what the members of the commission are doing. So does it? Do you do you agree with that? Does anyone disagree with that? Any thoughts?
Well, I know in the past, I'm just giving you an example. All city events. You can look out and see whether it was PIO, whatever we called it back then now, Strategic Communications, they were present.
At every ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting in our major events, you know, they would they would script something for you to say. I never used the scripts. But CHAZ was always there with a script for us to follow, where to stand, what to do, where to park. It was all planned out and we knew about it. Somewhere along the way, we we.
Well, we have new we have new people, so.
I understand that, but my thing is, if we want to do that, I just think it's city events.
So I I think if.
Following Robert McKenzie around to every, I don't go to HOA meetings, obviously. I don't unless I'm requested. I'm sure you all have the same protocol, but we'll deal with that at a later date. But I mean, what if I'm just going to to talk to a group of folks over here in Riva Vista? Do I need Strategic Community? We have to define.
I agree.
Where do we want them? Otherwise, I could get upset the one day they don't come to me when I'm having, you know, a huddle at the at the park with the with the kids with the hurricanes at Mills Pond. What is a city event? What do we want them to do has to be, in my opinion.
All right, so I have some thoughts on that. So I think at a minimum, there should be at all the ribbon cuttings. And I think at a minimum that anytime the city gives financial assistance to an event, I think that's something where where the Strategic Communications should participate. And if we want to go beyond that, that's fine, but I just feel that that as a as a base, let's see how that goes for now.
That's what they were doing before until all of a sudden, everything just fell apart.
I just want to make sure, because new people were there, they need they need direction and and I don't, you know, blame anybody. I just I don't think I don't know whether they were given direction and I know that is I've heard from other members of of.
Not only did they come, they bought the ribbon and the scissors. I mean, we had a script. When I got out of a car, I knew exactly what I was doing from the time I got out of my car to the end of that ribbon.
And that happens most of the time anyway.
Yeah, but.
But I just don't I just want to make sure that that, you know, we all we all. Okay.
So do we.
Did you hear that, everybody?
So I agree.
We agree more than we disagree.
I know. Okay.
Any thoughts?
So I agree, but I mean, I brought this up before and do we is current staffing level is good, Chris, to do this?
That's the thing that I'll have to take a look at is if if I just want to make sure we have the depth to be able to do that because we have events at the same time and and.
Mayor saying every ribbon cutting and city sponsored event. That's just a lot.
I'll need to look at how we're currently staffing, whether or not we have that capacity. But I understand I understand the direction you want to go.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. Okay, all right, we can do it.
All right, um, okay, now now something is very touchy and I just want to I want to make sure we all understand what's going on here. It's my understanding, and John, if you could help me here, it's my understanding that you're engaged in an audit of the police chief for his the time his work hours and his working on when he's on duty and when he's off duty. And is that something you're doing? Is that something going on in your office?
Yes, sir. We typically don't discuss these until the reports are finalized, but.
So who so so I'm just trying to understand, how did that how did that come about? Like, did the City Commission ask you to do that?
No, sir, we we received an anonymous complaint that the chief was engaged in secondary employment at the same time he was supposed to be on duty. And so we had an obligation to investigate that.
You have an obligation to investigate anonymous complaints?
Yes, we do.
Even the state now requires that you give your name when you register a cold complaint.
Yeah, so the thing is, it, you know, I just find I'm just a little uncomfortable with that because if anybody and everybody sends you an anonymous complaint. You engage the the full operation of the city to undertake an analysis of something that may or may not interest the commission. You need to, I would think that you would need to come with that anonymous complaint, come to the commission and say, is this something that you would authorize me to do? Otherwise, you're doing something on your own without the authorization of the commission and who knows who this person is? It could be some some whack job who lives in another state who who makes something up. I mean, that's not appropriate and I'm just, I don't know what 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 encouraged you to to do something like that, not knowing whether or not the commission really has an interest in knowing what that complaint is about. I don't even know what the complaint is.
So so my two options in that case is I either investigate any claim that comes to me that's credible of fraud or I refer it to the state attorney's office.
So what is credible? How what is your standard?
So when we have screenshots.
Anonymous.
When we have screenshots of telestaff, which is their timekeeping system, which shows that that it was a work day for him. And I've got screenshots of him attending a NCAA sporting event at the same time. That's a credible situation and I have an obligation to hopefully clear the chief. So there are there are rumors going around, there are Leo boards out there with insinuations on them. And the best thing that I can do is I can look into the public rumors that are out there and hopefully lay those to rest and say that he's received all the appropriate approvals in advance. He has followed all the processes and procedures that we have in place in order to make sure that there is nothing improper taking place and that is what we're what we're doing.
Okay, that's interesting, but I just don't think that's the way things happen. You know, I think that the types of work that you're supposed to be engaged in have to come from the commission. They don't materialize what we say in law, suis ponte, like you don't you don't just do it on your own because somebody happens to run into you and we don't know even the the authenticity of any of that stuff that you just described. I mean, you're not the state's attorney, you're not trying to determine probable probable cause. And my concern is that that, you know, you're you're acting on a tip, especially an anonymous tip. You have no idea, you know, who manufactured or created that that documentation sent to you. And now you're putting the city in a position that it may not want to be put in. And, you know, I think you, you know, you you respond to the City Commission not to anonymous tip givers. And I just think that that kind of practice needs to stop and I think that whatever you're doing needs to stop.
So, Mayor, in sixteen years, I have never had a commissioner tell me that I should or should not investigate anything. This will be the first time this has ever happened in my tenure here in the city. I have not once.
What else? What else have you investigated?
We've investigated a lot of things, but never once has the commission. I'm sorry?
Under whose authority?
Under my authority, under the charter.
You have the authority, but under what? Under under your contract, under?
Under the charter, the city auditor has the authority to investigate any matter of city business.
Right, but that comes from the direction of the of the commission who decides what is city business and what isn't city business.
No, sir, it does not. The city charter does not say that the city commission establishes the audit work plan or approves the audit work plan or determines what it is appropriate for the city auditor to look at.
Well, I disagree with you, especially since I was a commissioner when your position was first established and the whole idea of your position was to respond to the needs of the commission. And and it was never intended to be an independent prosecutor of some sort to to have a to have a mandate to do things on your own without the authority of the commission. You know, a commission that pays for your staff and pays for everything and 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 here you are. I mean, where does it where what are the boundaries of your job then? What are your boundaries? You could be investigating me for that for that matter and by what authority do you have to do that?
We do not investigate the City Commission. We investigate. We investigate city staff.
Well, who says you can't? Why don't you? Why don't you investigate any of this commission?
We have a longstanding policy going back to three city attorneys ago that the city attorney and my office do not investigate the City Commission. We do investigate all members of management, all city employees. We have access to every city record and every city employee under the charter.
Right, but does the charter delineate your your responsibility of of hired personnel or hired hired staff versus the commission?
The charter in no way says that I come to the commission in order to have my authority to investigate any issue approved by you. If that's something that the commission wants to change, I'm open to doing that, but that's not what the charter says.
Let's just let's talk about that. I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Do that, you do need to get a motion to extend the meeting.
I can't hear you.
If you're going to do that, I would recommend you get a motion to extend the meeting. It is ten o'clock.
Move to extend.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maitus, not present. Commissioner Glossman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantallas?
Yes, extend it to ten thirty. Okay, so Alan, do you can you shed any light on this as to what the what the parameters of the city auditor's responsibilities? I don't want to put you on the spot. We can bring this up again at a at a time after you've studied it. But I've been I've been on this commission for a dozen years, okay? And never has this issue ever come up to my knowledge where the auditor takes it upon himself to go out and investigate employees, suis ponte.
I'll preface my statement by saying that I detest reading the charter on the fly. It's that the city auditor's responsibilities are set forth in four point one four. It seems to indicate that it would be at the direction of the city manager or commissioner, but again, I haven't had the opportunity to speak with the city auditor. And again, I'm reading on the fly, so I probably would like to look at that.
Yeah, I don't want you to read on the fly. I get that. But but clearly, this concerns me because this is an example of what we need to do to define people's roles. And I just find it very disconcerting that there's, you know, there's a constitutional officer here who's going upon taking it upon himself to to engage the the resources of the city in a way that have not been authorized by this commission. And it's very it's very, very uncomfortable, whether it be this the the police chief or anybody else. So we used to have a Department of Professional Standards.
We still do.
We still do, right? And but that and but again, those were usually initiated by either the city manager or the commission, those investigations. Right, so, all right, so.
Was that nod? Yes or no?
Well, it's.
I'm sorry, what was that question, Commissioner McKenzie?
He was nodding his head.
I said, when we used to have complaints submitted to the Department of Professional Standards, they were usually initiated by either the city manager or the City Commission.
I can't speak to past practice with with, I believe Mr. Gretz has had brought that in more formally. As it operates today, I believe it's more for EEO matters, equal employment opportunity issues that's been used. So current practice versus prior practice, I couldn't comment on, but currently, it's mostly for employment issues.
Currently is what?
Employment issues. So for example, if you as an employee, right, so currently in past, because I know I was involved in some cases when I was outside council that had originated from professional compliance that dealt with some improper behavior. But I don't know that that's the charge of that department now. It was back then, but that was under a different administration.
So, John, has anybody since the the filing of that complaint, has anyone revealed their identity?
No.
Okay, has any have you been communicating at all with anybody in the police union with regard to this matter?
No.
All right, so, I mean, personally, I I I I'm not comfortable with the continuation of this investigation because, you know, just someone coming out of the woodwork saying, oh, I know this or I'm going to show you this and, you know, you need to investigate it. I just think that's that's a really, really bad precedent for the city. I personally would like the investigation suspended until we've come to some decision as to what the charter says. I don't know what the rest of the commission thinks, but I think we need to talk about this.
So Mayor, I to your point, I serve at your pleasure. I if you, as a commission, don't want me to look into this, I will happily drop the investigation. As to how we have performed our work, what we have looked at are the internal telestaff records. We've looked at the policies and procedures of the department, the policies and procedures of the city. We have interviewed relevant staff associated with the city manager and the chief and we are in the process of completing that. If you don't want that to come forward, I will happily terminate our review at this point in time. I don't have a problem with that. What I what I do struggle with, though, as a practical matter, is and it's this is standard practice within the internal audit profession to have a whistleblower hotline. This is uniform across the board where we get tips and every organization that has a internal audit function has a whistleblower hotline. This is how we find most of what we find in our environment. We don't find most of the things that are going wrong when we just undertake a general audit. We find them when they're brought to our attention by people and it's usually by disgruntled employees or ex-partners, spouses and so forth. These are the ones who have an axe to grind and also have knowledge of things that are improper and bring them to to the attention of folks like myself and law enforcement and and other things. This is very common technique, but if I may, sir. So as a practical matter, if this comes to my attention and I want to get a consensus of the commission because I can't poll you individually to go do something, I need a consensus of the commission. Then if I understand your suggestion, I should bring it to you at a workshop and ask you, I have a complaint about the chief, should I investigate that? And by that very nature, it undermines my investigation.
Well, let me ask you, let me ask this. The Department of Professional Standards, is it under the auditor's jurisdiction?
No.
So. No, it's a part of the manager's office.
Right, so i- if you get a if you get a a tip, you know, whistleblower tip, that should immediately be be referred to the Department of Professional Standards. Why would you assume that it's your responsibility to take that on?
Because fraud, waste and abuse is my responsibility under the charter and that's fraud.
Well, first of all, again, I I believe that your responsibility is to the commission. And, you know, your job, your role, your position when it was originally established was to respond to requests by the commission to investigate whatever the commission decided you should that the person in your position should investigate. Because there was a time when there was actually a concern about the budget and whether or not we had enough internal controls over the budget. And we wanted to make sure that the money that was authorized by the commission was being properly spent. That's exactly why the that the auditor's position was started, okay? How it morphed into an investigative unit to act on on on, you know, anonymous tips as a whistleblower in a whistleblower context is something that you created. Because it was never intended as part of the original authorization to establish an auditor's position. So and the fact that we have a separate Department of Professional Standards, which would normally address these types of, you know, alleged conduct of misrepresentation, fraud or whatever it may be, sexual harassment, any of those things. I just think that I just think that that you stepped out of your lane and I think that I really believe that this should have been brought to the attention of the the department that handles just these types of complaints.
So so Mayor, last year, when we were doing some of our other analysis of purchasing card, we found employees in multiple departments who committed hundreds of thousands of dollars of thefts of equipment. Where they were buying equipment, turning around, driving to a pawn shop and pointing it.
Okay.
Those employees were arrested, they've been incarcerated, they forfeited their pensions. Again, we found that. I did not come to the commission and ask for permission to investigate those individuals. We investigated them, we found that fraud and we were responsible then for going and working with the investigative folks in economic crimes over at the police department. And that led to several convictions. This is what the this is the nature of what we do.
So what is the nature of the Department of Professional Standards?
Professional standards has to do with, as far as I understand it, work violations. It's not fraud. They're not looking for economic crime. This is an economic crime. We just had a sergeant in the police department who has been charged with an economic crime for engaging in what was alleged to be the same behavior where he was engaged in outside employment at the same time he was on duty. And that individual has been arrested.
Well.
So that's not a that's not an Office of Professional Standards.
Was that your investigation?
No, we did not find that one.
Why not?
It wasn't brought to my attention. I did not get that one.
Who investigated that?
I can't tell you, sir.
Oh, okay.
But had it been reported to me, we would have investigated it.
How'd you find out about the credit card?
How'd you find out about the credit cards?
We did an analysis of purchasing card purchases, and we came across some anomalies. We saw that there were large amounts of sand being purchased, far in excess of what would be needed for volleyball courts. We would have built a small mountain with all the sand we were buying on a weekly basis. And my auditor, because he exhibited due professional skepticism, which is an auditing standard, inquired about it, and we found out that an outside vendor was working in collusion with one of our Parks Department employees to commit extensive fraud against the city.
So why don't we do this, Mayor? In light of what you brought to our attention, we suspend the investigation, and then we.
I think we should suspend the investigation until we determine what the definition of.
Can I finish? Are you gonna finish my sentence?
I'm sorry.
We suspended it, and then we look down the road of looking at the charters, which we indicated months ago, we wanted to add some things to our charter. And maybe the Charter Review Board can, we can study what is there. Alan can come back with his legal piece and do maybe a workshop on the charter. But I think we should suspend it today and look at the charter and what we need to do to improve if we want to move in a different direction, or if we even know this to be true. And then Alan get a chance to look at the charter and see what his duties are, and then go from there. So that's what I would like to see us do.
Does anyone, okay, does anyone else have any thoughts?
I do, Mayor, actually. I, you know, I, this is, to me, very disturbing to hear this, that you brought this up. And I, I think we really have to look at the role of auditor. I know that I've been very frustrated in agenda items that we've been working on for years that can't seem to get the attention that they need to bring across the finish line. And yet then I hear now that we're spending time investigating the chief of police. You know, I could go on and on and on, but I'm just gonna say this. Earlier in the day, Mr. Herbst said if we've lost confidence in his ability to serve in this position, let him know. And I'm doing that right now. I have lost confidence. I don't know if anyone else has, but I have lost confidence in the auditor. And I do think it is time to make a change in that position.
Oh, with just this, or the other, other reasons?
I have lots of reasons, but it's just one thing after another. And then to hear now that we're spending time on this, when, when we can't get the work done on issues that are before us for a good amount of time, and I could go through that list, but I don't need to. I'm just saying that I think it's a position that's run amok, and we have to, we have to hone it in. We have to go back to the reason that that position was created. We have to define responsibilities. And we have to ensure that the work that this commission is moving forward gets the attention that it needs from an auditor's perspective, and not these kinds of investigations. I, as I said earlier in the day, Mr. Herbst said, let him know if we've lost confidence. I have lost confidence. Have you lost confidence?
Well, I'm very disturbed by, you know, this, because I just feel that it really went beyond the bounds. And especially since, you know, look, it's no, it's no secret that there are elements within this city that are looking to undermine the credibility and the sustainability of our new police chief. I've said it once before, and I'll say it again, and I just feel that this is part of an effort to try to get him removed because they never, they never liked the choice. And, and so, and it really bothers me that one of our senior staff is participating in this effort to, you know, to further the efforts of an anonymous caller. It just, it just seems really untoward. And, but I want to hear everyone's opinion. Commissioner Sorenson, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, sure. So towards the investigation of the chief, you know, equally concerned. I think that there should be some mechanism for investigating something like this.
We do have that mechanism. It's called the Department of Professional Standards.
So professional standards would, this could fall under their auspices. I just wanna, I don't know everything they do. Chris, is that?
Yeah, I mean, so I don't, if that complaint had come by way of Office of Professional Standards, I probably would have worked with the city attorney to bring in outside counsel to do some type of inquiry.
So we need to have a mechanism, and that, to me, seems appropriate, the Professional Responsibilities Department. And I think quickly it has to move out from under a charter officer too, Mayor. That'd be my concern, is if some entity is overseeing or an investigation is being led by a charter officer, that just concerns me. So I think there has to be some independence, so whether it's an independent law firm or something, that makes sense to me. And I've asked before, and I think the answer is yes, but we have a whistleblower hotline. Is that right, Chris?
No, we do not.
But we don't?
We do not.
I could have sworn I asked, and I was told we did have a whistleblower hotline.
No, we do not. We have an Internal Affairs line in the police department that's a twenty-four hour line. That is somewhat of a hotline. And in this context, that would be the place that I would encourage somebody to.
Who answers that line and that hotline over there? Who answers it? Where does it go?
It goes into Internal Affairs, but I can't tell you that whose desk picks it up.
So if you got a complaint for the police department, you call the hotline, and the police internal affairs address that?
That's the recipient of complaints against police officers, correct. That's not citywide.
That's not citywide.
I know, I get that, but still, we got a hotline for complaints or whistleblowing, and Internal Affairs gets that.
Right.
So we need.
Maybe this, this general hotline is for everybody and not just, no, we can't have our own hotline. And we have one hotline for the whole city of Fort Lauderdale.
People, people don't wait for a hotline with us.
I know, but I'm just saying, yeah, we saw that tonight with me, but that's okay. Hotline is a hotline.
Yes. We don't have a hotline.
It would encourage everybody to call this number if they have issues. And I wouldn't be swayed one way or the other by someone in my department, I'm not in the department, coming to me saying something, and I raise that issue. It just goes to a line. Then we have a staff person that obviously reports to the manager, that handles those type of complaints. And I think we take all this stuff out of play. But I don't, we have another issue now, but I just still think it should be suspended. And we figure out now what we want to do with the charter, or where we go with this issue that has been brought to us.
Mayor, may I just add one thing, though, because I want to correct just one thing for the record. So you may recall that we had an almost identical instance last year where my office received a complaint about the interim chief, which we also investigated, and we brought that to your attention. So we brought our final report on the interim chief Dietrich, where we did the same thing on another type of complaint as it related to nepotism, and we brought that forward to you as a final report. There was no objection to the report at that point in time. So I don't, I want to be very careful to say that my office is impartial, independent, professional. We don't pick winners and losers. We're not part of anybody's agenda, and we're not trying to advance it. The best thing that I can do is, again, impartial, independent, professional. And if I could exonerate the chief, I am happy to do so, just as we did the last time when we looked at the circumstances around interim chief Dietrich, and we said, no, she has not violated the city's policies related to nepotism. So again, I, I want to make sure that this isn't characterized as any attempt on the part of my office to cast any aspersions on her chief. I have the utmost respect for him.
But I don't want your office to be manipulated by an anonymous caller who, you know, could fabricate evidence upon which you spend serious resources in order to do an investigation. And this commission or the manager not having, you know, participated or having consented to the, to this investigation. I just feel.
The manager did participate. We interviewed the manager. He was one of the participants in our investigation. And what we do is we go to the source. No, he did not. But we go to the source. So the reason he didn't authorize it is because we needed to validate whether or not the city manager had in fact authorized the secondary employment. So that was one that we, I couldn't ask him to verify or validate an investigation when his testimony was one of the things that was needed for the investigation. So what we do is we go to the source material. We go to the timekeeping system in the, in the police department. So irrespective of any allegation that we get, we go and we obtain credible, sufficient evidential matter in order for us to form an opinion. And that's what we did. We look at the source data. We don't rely on somebody's allegation. I'm not just going to take an allegation and say that that is truth. We have to independently verify and establish the veracity of the allegations. We look at facts.
I, okay, so I just feel, though, that the dynamic is askew here. And I think that, and, you know, the recommendation of Commissioner McKenzie, I would support. I don't know if anybody else would support that, until we figure out.
You agree with me?
I agree with you. That's because I'm too tired to not agree with you. No, but seriously, does anyone else?
So if I can just finish, so I think that it seems to me that professional responsibilities is where anonymous complaints should be investigated like this. So to me, that seems the right place. So, or I'm open to the discussion about where it should be.
Commissioner, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
I think Commissioner Glassman alluded to this. The governor said we cannot have anonymous tips.
They say legislatures.
Only, only, only as it pertains to code enforcement. That's code. That doesn't apply to, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I think we've got to figure out where to have this, house this. I share the mayor's concern about the auditor doing it. I think we got to figure out where to house it. Number two, we need to establish a eight hundred whistleblower hotline immediately that anyone can call and provide fraud, waste, and abuse tips. And whatever entity we feel should investigate that, whether it's professional responsibilities or whoever it is, that they investigate that, that it goes directly to them. So that's number two.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
And then with the third point about city auditor, I agree with Commissioner Glassman. I think it's time for a change.
All right, so.
I think we need to, on the protocols, and perhaps the city manager and I, and we can, because there's a lot of different complaints that we get. I don't entertain anonymous ones, but we do get complaints sometimes or information regarding some practices that we kind of look into.
You had one on me.
But the, but there's certain things that professional compliance, so for example, if we get a complaint, we don't have the authority to, as the city auditor said, we don't have the authority to investigate you. So that has to go through the OIG, right? That's outside of us. So even with professional compliance, you know, that they get a complaint about an elected official, that we'd have to set up some protocols, obviously with your blessing, as to how each type of complaint would essentially go through.
Well, I think, I think that has to be refined.
Right, right. No, that's what I'm suggesting.
At the same time, look, I don't want it to look like we're trying to stop an investigation. So, you know, you said, John, that you're like, you're ready to submit a report, right?
That's correct.
I mean.
That's correct.
But, you know, you know.
We have, we have completed all of our field work. We are in the process of writing the report at this point. We're going through our own internal quality review of all the work papers. Because, so just so you understand our process, that we have one auditor that does the work. We have a supervisor that then reviews all the work that gets performed. And then there's a third level of review that gets done over that. So we have, we have two levels of review for quality that we undertake within our office. This is why you may have, remember, we just did our three-year peer review, and they said our system of quality control was outstanding. And that's why, because we have two levels of supervisory review. So we are going through that process now. We are preparing a draft report. Again, it's a draft report. If you don't want, if the report comes to you, if you want to see the report, it now becomes a public record. If you don't want to see the report, it stays in draft, and it's never a public record. I will close the investigation. Again.
The thing is, you know, if you've done an investigation, you know, I mean, I don't think you were authorized to do it. I don't think that it was appropriate that you did it without commission involvement. You know, I don't know who these secret informers are, and I don't know what evidence would have been destroyed or flushed down the toilet or something that, you know, that you wouldn't have been able to complete your investigation if you had brought it to the attention of the commission. But I do know that, you know, it really, I just, it doesn't sit well with me. But at the same time, I think that it would look, it would be perhaps not appropriate to stop the investigation, Commissioner. But I think.
Well, I followed your lead from the beginning of.
But going forward.
Then it's all.
Forward, I think that we shouldn't permit any further investigations until we come up with a policy of how these investigations are initiated. But as far as what the commissioners to my right have asked, you know, it sounds to me like, you know, what, you know.
Can I ask this one thing of you?
Yeah, go ahead.
As the mayor, based on what he just said, because if it's a draft form and we, it comes to us as public. If it, if you get to that point in a draft form, and you only talk to one of us, is it public?
It becomes a public document when it's presented to the governing body. So if I start, if I start discussing with each one of you individually, under public, under public records law, and the city attorney can confirm this, if I show it to each of you individually, that is effectively the same as making it a public document.
Me personally, I wouldn't want to see it public.
Right, but he can come and speak to me, for example, and not show me the, not show me the document.
Yeah, but it still becomes public.
No, he doesn't have to give me the document. He can tell me what the document is.
But it becomes public.
Not if, if he doesn't tender the document to me, if he tells me the contents, it doesn't become public. But it doesn't matter whether it's public or not. I just, I'm very.
I'd rather suspend it personally, and we separate the issues. Just suspend it. Since we don't feel comfortable in what has transpired, and until we can understand more of the charter's direction, who does what, who's on first, as Steve would say. I would just, I would stop this and move in the direction of the charter, making the changes, and putting in any other controls in place like the rest of us have indicated. The hotlines, what have you, after we've sat down and we think this thing through.
I think, Mayor, I mean, I think it needs to just be in the right place. I don't know the charter well enough to know where it should be, so I think.
No, we're gonna make recommendations, too. I'm not just saying, give it to them. We're gonna look at it and see what that document encompasses and.
I think we need to figure out where is the right place for it, and then it needs to continue to its natural culmination. So that's.
I think that if, look, if an investigation has been made, though, you know, I don't think anyone wants to prevent the results. I mean, it is what it is, assuming that it's based on sufficient factual basis, which we're relying on, John, to have provided to us. Again, I get what you folks are saying about, you know, maybe we need to, we need to move on. And, you know, you know, maybe we need a change in that job, in that position. But I'm just, I'm concerned about, you know, the public thinking that we're trying to hide something, because we're not.
Well, you brought it up.
What's that?
We got it because you brought it up.
I know, but I want to make sure.
I was trying to get us to a place, but now we're at a place.
I brought it up because it really upset. I can only talk about this in public, because I can only say it to you and to them in public. I can't talk to you.
I get that. I get it.
Mayor, I think, I don't.
I think the public needs to know what has been going on here, because it's a little squirrely, as far as I'm concerned. I just don't, I think it's inappropriate for a city officer to be undertaking investigations of other employees without, you know, with, on an anonymous tip just because he determines in his own mind that this is something to pursue. So I think that's really inappropriate. Now, the fact that the job is done, and, you know, it's sitting, you know, it's just ready to be typed up. You know, I think that to some extent, we have a responsibility to now see what those results are. But going forward, I think we need changes, serious changes, and I'm agreeing with you guys that we need to make those changes.
So right now, who does the police chief report to?
Me.
So until I hear from the city manager about his employer staff person, I feel comfortable in suspending the investigation. And maybe tomorrow he'll come to me and say, I think something's different. We can always come back and revisit this.
Well, the investigation's been done.
But he investigated a lot of things that we've stopped at the committee, at the commission level in the past. Based on my tenure here, that call is ours. Here today, I would. that call is ours. Here today, I would still say suspended. I want to hear from his, his manager, because his, his manager is the one that manages that department.
Right.
So, an audit's an audit, but I need to hear from the manager that there's a breakdown in his department. So, I feel comfortable, I'm not, I don't think we hide anything from the public.
If I feel that there is, I will bring that to you. If I feel that there is, I would bring that to you.
Right, I feel comfortable right now that we're not hiding anything from, from the public. I think, I think we discovered something. City manager is responsible for, for, for the chief in that police department and when I find out something's do- being done differently, then I may want the city manager's head. No, we, we, no, we're calling for heads.
Just gave him a three percent raise.
Well, I, well, Ben wanted to give him more.
Five, I think we gave him five.
But I still think it's his department and we should let him, um-
Okay, so let's do that. Let's do that.
What are we doing?
We're going to let the, let the, uh, let John give the, the results, the draft-
I don't want the results.
The city manager.
Yeah, they deal with that, so it won't become public, right?
And if it becomes necessary for this city manager to come to the, uh, to the commission, it'll be his decision.
I think what the auditor's going to say though is that he doesn't, you report to the elected officials, right? Is that what you're going to say? You, you report to, you report to the commission, not to me.
That, that's correct. We, we can't have that. That would be, uh, that would compromise the independence of the office, but may, may I, may I?
Too technical. Hold on a second.
Sure, sure.
I want it suspended until I hear from, suspend it and we hear from the department head in reference to the police department.
And, and by the way, it will, the final report will go to management first. So, this is always a protocol that we follow. When, when the report is finalized, we sit down with the city manager's office, we review the report with management. It doesn't become a public document at this point. The city manager's office and his staff has an opportunity to correct any errors of fact with which they disagree. As you saw today with the earlier report, they sometimes disagree with our conclusions. Um, and we will then incorporate the city manager's responses. So, if we find something and they could object to the finding or they could agree with the finding and they could object to the recommendation or they could agree with the finding and the recommendation, after that point, we bring it to you. So, the city manager will see this and have an opportunity to weigh in on the report that we do and the concerns that we raise. If he disagrees with what we have put forward as a finding, which we think is a deficiency, he'll have that opportunity to discuss that with my department. We have always been very flexible in working with, look, this is my fourth city manager. I've, I've always been very flexible, working with city managers throughout my career to ensure that the reports that we produce add value, um, and don't specifically go out of their way to embarrass the city or any individuals in it. You'll notice my reports never wind up on the front page of the Sun Sentinel.
No, it's not, it's, it's not so much to embarrass the city. It's the, being fair to an individual whose, whose integrity is being questioned and, and I feel that the motives are, are, are suspicious at best and, and I'm really concerned if this person was such a, this tipper was so concerned about the integrity of the investigation, they would participate in it and in a way that they could be identified. But clearly, you know, cowardice alone is what motivated this and I really believe that this city should not be, you know, a party to this kind of transaction and this kind of, uh, conduct, so-
My recommendation is suspend it and if the city manager comes back later on with a discovery, something he discovered on his own managerial, uh, scope of that department, I'd deal with it then, but suspend it right now so it doesn't become record or anything.
Well, why don't we just let them, let-
It was anonymous, so we know it was anonymous.
Finish, let him finish this.
I don't want him to finish it.
I, I, well, wi- without, without dealing with that issue, I, I think I want to, I think I want to address the larger issue that both yourself and the other commissioners have raised. So, there is another approach that I am more than happy to adopt going forward as a matter of practice and governance. If the commission, and it could either be to you or to your audit advisory board, would like to approve our audit work plan in advance every year, we can happily do that to you. So, we will do our risk analysis every year. We will bring forward a list of what we think are the high priority topics for an audit each year. And anytime we're going to have a deviation from that plan, we'll bring that back to you. So, this is a standard practice. Um, I, I am wholly comfortable with it. I think it's a, I think it's, it's appropriate. And as a matter of practice, whether it's me or if you decide to hire somebody else going forward, it, that's of no consequence to me. I want to make sure that you've got a process in place that you're comfortable with. And so, if you think that's a process that, that gives you the degree of confidence in how the program is being applied, if you think that that is a more objective and impartial way, impartial way of doing it, um, again, I, I have no problem instituting that beginning next fiscal year where we'll bring our, we, we do an audit work plan every year. So, I'm happy to bring that to the commission and have you bless it before we go forward. And if you have items you want to add, items you want to subtract, again, um, as the charter says, you know, we do things at your direction as well. So, we take input from the city manager, we take input from the city commission. We look at, at a variety of risk factors when we evaluate the city as a whole and we develop our work plan from that. But if as a, as a process matter, um, you would prefer to have that come to you to bless that audit work plan, I think that's perfectly appropriate.
Well, let us, we'll, we'll, we'll consider that. I don't know if that's the answer, but, um-
But I think it addresses the concerns that i- in the larger sense about what we look at.
Alright, so, so, um, you know, what, you know, c- you can, obviously you can confer with the city manager, you know, finish your report, but just stop it right there before, and then this, then the commission will decide what to do.
And then I can't guarantee, because based on this conversation, I suspect that there's going to be interest, because there's been representations that the investigation's over and that it's either in draft form or whatever else, that requests are going to come in for it. I can't guarantee without looking at the law, everything in front of me, that just the auditor failing to provide it to you, even though it's been complete, to just let it die and stay someplace in a closet where it never becomes public record. So, it may ultimately become public.
No, no, I don't think we want to put it in a closet anywhere. I don't think we're trying to hide anything. I just, I'm very concerned about the process.
No, I understand that, but if he shares anything with the city commission, I mean, I'm sorry, with the city manager i- i- in written form, just understanding, be clear that I don't know if we get the request that we'll be able to protect it from public.
I say we suspend it. You want to deal with other issues, you deal with those, but suspend the investigation is what I'm recommending. We can vote that up or down.
What do, what do you all think?
No, do not suspend it.
No, but I also-
Move it to its conclusion.
But I also want to return, Mayor, to the subject, another subject that both Commissioners Sorensen and I expressed a lack of confidence.
So, hold on, extend, extend the meeting.
Yeah, I need to extend.
Move to extend the meeting.
That was it.
Second.
Now, go ahead.
To what time, eleven o'clock?
I think we'll be finished real soon, because we're not dealing with the investigation, but we're dealing with something else.
Okay, till eleven thirty, till, till whenever.
Eleven o'clock.
Okay, eleven o'clock.
It didn't have to take that long to do what you want to do.
Okay, um, just, okay, so you have the, uh, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Just to extend.
I don't want to be on. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Mr. President, Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trenton.
Yes. Alright, so, Commissioner Glassman.
What?
So, Commissioner Glassman.
What?
You said you wanted to bring up-
Have we concluded the investigation discussion? I just want to make sure we're-
I think we've concluded that.
We're good, okay.
How do we finish that?
Yeah, I just want to-
We concluded it by saying he can finish his investigation.
Super C's me.
And, and once he concludes, he con- confers with you and then the commission will decide where we're going to go with the investigation.
But, John, are you willing to accept that? Because you've historically taken the position that you don't, I mean, we can, you can deliver it to me and I can provide a management response, but your responsibility is to the commission, not to me.
That, that's correct. If, if, so, just so I'm clear. So, if you would repeat that again. So, as I understand it, you want me to-
You can complete your, you can complete, you can prepare your draft conclusions. You can submit your, uh, submit that to the city manager for his review to determine the, uh, the accuracy uh, of his testimony and his understanding of the, uh, of the investigation. And, um, and once that's concluded and you've finalized your report, we will then decide how will we, how, how or when it will be presented to the commission.
That's fine. Again, I would not take that direction from the city manager alone in a normal circumstance, but I understand he's getting the direction from you, just like I'm getting the direction from you, so I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner, uh-
Everybody understood that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Um, both I and Commissioner Sorensen expressed, uh, a lack of confidence in the city auditor. Um, so it's up to you.
Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, we both have. Do you need a motion?
You need a motion? Yeah, you need a motion.
And what would you like in that motion?
Well, what are, what are your intents?
I think that we need to go in a new direction for a city auditor.
So, you're looking to terminate John?
That would be my motion.
Okay, well, is there a second to that?
Second.
There's a second to that. Okay, any discussion, Commissioner McKenzie? I'm going from this side to this side.
Thank you, it's okay, but, um, I have no, I don't have a dog in the fight.
Alright, um, okay, so, Commissioner Glassman, um, tell us the reasons why you feel that-
Mayor, I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry, it's just been brought to my attention that technically you're in a conference meeting. So, you can't make a motion.
He opened it back up to do his report. To do his report.
Right, but you had, right.
I would have walked out a long time ago.
But you're in a conference meeting now, so you can't make a motion. You'd have to reopen.
He brought his report back up, the one, he said it was a regular, during the regular meeting.
Yeah, just reopen the regular meeting.
Reopened it then, yeah.
Okay, so the conference meeting is now concluded.
That's why I came back.
Um, I'm reopening the regular meeting, uh, okay. Now, you, you, you made a motion, Commissioner Glassman, and Commissioner Sorensen, you seconded it? Commissioner Sorensen, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I think you probably need to restate the motion.
Is, your motion is to, is to terminate John Hurst? Okay, um, so, please give us the reasons why you want, why you feel it's necessary.
Well, I think I already did. I, I went through that earlier.
Repeat them.
I, I, I feel basically that, um, the priorities of the commission are not being met through this office of the city auditor. It's all quite askew, in my opinion. Um, projects that we've been working on don't seem to be getting the attention. And then you brought up tonight something that we're learning about, yet there's time, even though our projects are not getting the attention they need and our priorities are not being met, there seems to be time to conduct investigations on anonymous tips on the police chief and whatever else. I, you know, earlier in the day, when we went through that entire discussion about One Stop Shop and the report that we received, that was basically the responsibility of the auditor, the auditor said, let me know if you have lost confidence. I'm letting him know that I have lost confidence.
Okay, Mayor, if I may, I, I don't think I've made it, uh, any secret to the commission of my intent to retire at the end of this year. So, if that helps you in your decision, Commissioners, uh, that was always my plan. I think I've, I've been pretty upfront about that.
I never knew that.
In here sixteen years, well, I've, I've, I've said it on numerous occasions, um, so, if that works in your plans, I have hired somebody. You've had the pleasure of seeing her up here in front of you, Megan. I've brought her on board because I've been trying to develop a succession plan, because there's nobody in my office that can serve as an interim city auditor up until I hired her. So, because the charter requires that it has to be a CPA and so there's nobody else that can perform that function. It would be like having somebody in the attorney's office who's not an attorney. You can't have an interim city attorney. So, I've hired somebody in anticipation of, of my impending retirement and I would like to, for continuity purposes, have a little more time to work with her. She's just gone through some very significant health issues and is returning back to a regular full-time employment. Uh, again, it's not my goal to stay if I'm not wanted, but I-
I believe his contract requires a sixty-day notice. So, it'd be a sixty-day notice. Uh, what is her name?
Megan Gaylord.
And how long has Megan been with us?
Megan has only been with us for a few months at this point, so she's within her first year.
Okay. Commissioner Sorensen, do you have any, uh, comments? What is the basis for your feeling that we should terminate?
I just think, um, from a strategic standpoint, priority standpoint, I just think it's time for, for a different, uh, different perspective and different, uh, um, focus, so.
Alright, I'm just looking at this, uh, employment agreement. It says that, um, four months severance pay unless there is cause, which I don't, we'd have to make that determination. But we have to give, uh, sixty days' written notice of our intent to terminate the contract.
Yeah, Mayor, I would, I would suggest the full, um, sixty days and, you know, appropriate severance. That, that it not be, uh, a, a finding for cause for-
Alright, um, okay, any further questions? Is this the appropriate form in which to take a vote now?
If the motion's been made and seconded, then, yeah, you would take a vote.
But we, we've reconvened the, uh, the regular meeting, so we're in the proper-
We've reconvened the regular meeting.
Okay, alright, uh, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie.
No.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trenton.
Yes, so the motion carries and, uh, he's, John has given sixty days' notice and, uh, four months severance pay according to the contract. Correct me if I'm wrong, if any of those terms are incorrect.
I'll, I'll have to review the contract and make sure that, uh-
Alright, any further business with the commission? Meeting adjourned.